Hi. How are you?
Yes.
I'm thinking, I said, this is the sister right here. I can see, I can see that.
That is scupercatic. That is okay. How are you feeling?
Indeed, indeed. You know, we try. Rest in peace. Always have, have a happy ending.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
What's up?
RJ, you had a good mood today.
I'm here.
To make you super fast? Whoa.
All right, um, commish, good eve, good afternoon, commissioners, if you're in the room, if we can take our seats, I think we've got seven to get started. All right, uh, Mr. Deputy Sheriff Lee, please call the meeting order.
All rise, stand please. Hear ye, hear ye, this honorable county commissioners meeting in Shelby County, Tennessee is now open for the transaction business pursuant to adjournment. All persons having business with this commissioners drop near, give attention and you shall be heard. Please remain standing.
All right, thank you. We have, um, Pastor Anthony Sledge giving our invocation today. Pastor Sledge, thank you for being with us today.
Thank you. Let us bow. Father God, we thank you right now in the life-changing miraculous name of Jesus. Lord, we ask that you were blessed this meeting. May it be amicable, may they all come to understand that they may agree to disagree, but first and foremost, they stand on the shoulders of the constituents who elected them and use it as the God of their lives. Make this meeting a meeting of joy, a meeting of comfort, of understanding. And may they all know that with God, all things are possible. So may this meeting be impeccable, life-changing, and mostly effective today. This we ask in the mighty and magnanimous life-changing name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Vice Chair, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. Uh, Madam Vice Chair, if you wouldn't mind presenting this to Pastor, Pastor Sledge, before you, before you sit down, we've got a plaque we would like to give you.
Pastor Sledge, thank you so much for being here with us today, and we really appreciate the words of both uplifting and joy that you brought and your prayer for us today. And so on this day, we would like to present this recognition to Pastor Anthony Sledge at Zion Hill Missionary Baptist Church, who served as chaplain of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Pastor Sledge. Thank you, Vice Chair Avant. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Clay Beavs. Caswell. Sugarman.
Present.
Mills.
Present.
Ford.
Of course I'm here.
Wright. Bradford. Thornton. Morrison.
Present.
Brooks. Lowry. Avant.
Present.
Chairman Waley.
Present.
We have eight present.
All right, we have a quorum. Uh, can we get approval of the minutes of the previous session without objection? Uh, this is from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. All right, hearing none, those minutes are approved. It's possible to join the meeting in two ways via the designated email account, voc.e-mail@shelbycountytn.gov, or via phone at nine oh one two 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 one two three four. Uh, Madam Parliamentarian, please read the rest of the rule.
Members of the public who desire to address the county commission shall request permission by completing an appearance card, which will be given to the chair by a deputy. Members of the public shall be permitted to address the county commission unless ruled out of order by the chair or denied the opportunity to speak by a majority vote of the commissioners present and voting. Please note that as it pertains to public comment, our rules of order set a limit of no longer than three minutes when recognized by the chair. The chair may set a limit for discussion by the public of less than three minutes for each individual if circumstances require. Finally, to the members of the public, if you would like to express your pleasure or displeasure on a matter before the county commission, please do so by raising your thumb up or pointing it down as opposed to applause or other expressions of approval or disapproval. Disruptive members of the public are subject to removal from the commission chambers by the deputy sheriff. Thank you for your attention and in advance for your cooperation today.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, we have a few commissioners and staff who have birthdays in May. Uh, Commissioner Bradford's birthday was just a couple of days ago on Saturday. He'll be with us shortly, so happy birthday to Commissioner Bradford. Uh, Commissioner Caswell, birthday coming up, uh, on the twenty-second of May, so happy early birthday to you. Uh, and also happy early birthday to Ryan Gillespie, birthday on the twenty-fourth. Happy birthday to all. There he is. Uh, he's continuing to celebrate with us here together Monday night. Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. All right, Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number two.
Item two is a special resolution honoring Dr. Karen Johnson for her decades-long service to the University of Tennessee Health Science Center Shelby County and the medical community, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioner Sugarman. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair and colleagues. This is a special resolution honoring Dr. Karen Johnson for her dedicate decades-long service to the University of Tennessee Health Science Center. Whereas the Shelby County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize individuals making significant contributions in their respected fields. And Dr. Karen Johnson deserves recognition for her exemplary service and commitment in Shelby County as an endowed professor of women's health in the Department of Preventive Medicine at the University of Tennessee Health Science Center. Whereas Dr. Johnson graduated from Memphis Preparatory School and later Lambeth University before starting medical school at the UTHSC College of Medicine after she earned her medical degree and completed residency in internal medicine and a residency in preventive medicine at John Hopkins University, where she also obtained a Master of Public Health. Dr. Johnson's residency and graduate school experience at John Hopkins University heightened her interest in clinical research and prevention. Whereas in nineteen ninety, Dr. Johnson joined UTHSC as a faculty member and was determined to use teaching and research to prevent disease and promote health. Under Dr. Johnson's leadership as principal investigator, the National Institute of Health has granted over fifty-five million in research funding. As co-investigator, more than forty-five million has been granted from the United States Department of Defense. Whereas she served as principal investigator for numerous cert research studies, including the UTHSC location of the Women's Health Initiative, WHOI, which began in nineteen ninety-three. This study is significant due to the WHOI hormone trial, which prompted the Food and Drug Administration in two thousand and three to place a black box warning on all estrogen products, thank you goodness, given to post-menopausal women like myself. Therefore, this study played a role in preventing breast cancer worldwide. Dr. Johnson served as Chair of the Department of Preventive Medicine, President of the UTHSC Faculty Senate, and was once a member of the Board of Trustees for the University of Tennessee system. She was named by the Thomas Reuters as one of the world's most influential scientific minds and was awarded the President's Award in the Discovery category for research by UT President Randy Boyd in twenty nineteen. And whereas Dr. Johnson, I have to read all of this, I'm sorry, is thankful for her dedicated staff, all participants, her colleagues across the country, her colleagues at UTHSC, and especially her colleagues in the Department of Preventive Medicine. Lastly, Dr. Johnson is most grateful to her family for the love and support they have provided throughout her career and most importantly, to her husband, Dr. Joseph R. Johnson. Thank you so much.
That's if you were. Um, that, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Um, as a native Memphian, it is a great honor to be, um, recognized by the Board of Commissioners, uh, for my important medical research in helping prevent disease and promote health. And I must say, uh, as a team scientist, I couldn't do my research without the community. And I, and, and truly, um, if community members didn't volunteer for my research, if I didn't have help with, from the research fa, staff and the other faculty and the support of my family. And lastly, uh, to have a supportive environment at the University of Tennessee Health Science Center, Department of Preventive Medicine has really, uh, made a huge difference in my research. So thank you very much. It's a great honor.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for all your work and all your research and commitment, uh, to Shelby County. Okay, thanks again. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Uh, Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number three.
Item three is a special resolution honoring Scott Stevens, sponsored by Commissioner Brandon Morrison.
All right, uh, Commissioner Morrison, good afternoon. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman, and it's so good to meet you, Mr. Stevens. I'm so glad that you were brought to our attention to be honored. And so I'll read this resolution. Whereas Mr. Scott Stevens will retire this month on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from Compass Midtown High School, where he has served as a US government and economics teacher and Chair of the Social Studies Department. And whereas he has taught for fifteen years, beginning as a substitute teacher while earning his master's degree from the University of Memphis, helping students to grow through their passion for civics, economics, and history. And whereas Mr. Stevens has held teaching and leadership roles at Compass Community Schools and St. Michael Catholic School, always working to improve education for students. And whereas outside the classroom, he has served on educating, education committees, advised student honor groups, and worked for fourteen years in the Boy Scouts of America, I think they're who pointed you out to us. And fourteen years in retail management. And whereas he also coached and volunteered in youth sports, showing his lifelong commitment to helping young people succeed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Commissioners honors and thanks Mr. Scott Stevens for his outstanding service and wishes him, you, a happy and fulfilling retirement. Here it is. Absolutely. Should take our picture.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for all your service. Uh, thanks for being with us this afternoon. Uh, Madam Parliamentarian, really please read item number six.
Item six is a resolution of gratitude to the Shelby County Fire Department for their professional display of compassionate service, sponsored by Chairwoman Pro Tempore, Shontae K. Avant.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, good afternoon, Vice Chair Avant. Uh, great to see you back, uh, and, and excited to hear from you about this presentation, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. It is good to be here. I have told everyone who I've seen in the last thirty days, it is good to be seen and not viewed. Uh, for obvious reasons. I am so grateful to be here before you today and to give a special recognition to what I call heroes in our community. Um, it is an amazing thing to see firsthand, not only the professionalism, but, um, the care and compassion that is shown by those who serve us here in Shelby County, day in and day out. And for that reason, I'd like, uh, Chief Benson to come up with me, and I could also like to ask CO, CAO, Collins to come up. We have a special presentation to a few men and women. Um, and I'd like to, to, one, just recount that, um, actually on March twenty-sixth, um, at seven fifty PM, um, there was a life-changing event for me as, um, I had a actual allergic reaction to shellfish, had just been to dinner with my sister, and my body went into anaphylactic shock. Um, at that time, uh, obviously I thought that I was fine eating seafood, but, um, coming and having to be at the Kroger trying to get an EpiPen as they were closing in minutes and have not only the first responders, but also the paramedics who were there within minutes. Um, and this is a testament to Chief Benson and all of the work that they have done. And, um, it really is why we know they were granted the special honor and recognition for, uh, their work here in Shelby County. And so I'd like to ask if, um, these folks who not only supported me, made sure I had the care that I needed, made sure that I got to the hospital within minutes, um, as the ER doctor told us, if I had been there two minutes later, um, probably would have been a very different situation, and I would not be standing here before you today. And so I'd like to ask, um, Lieutenant Robert Dabs, twenty-two years of service, Driver Kenneth Raines, twenty years of service, Private Joseph Banks, seven years of service, also to the ambulance unit, paramedic, Private Martin Canst, Canst, Canstanda, three years of service, and driver, Private Kenneth Moment, one year of service. So, um, and also like to recognize, uh, if you could come up, um, their supervisor from the, uh, paramedic, she was there, uh, actually came down to the hospital, uh, where I was. And so, uh, in a time that it took me to be, uh, not only for them to come and respond, but, um, I'd just like to say a special thank you, uh, to Mr. Canst, Canstand, make sure I'm pronouncing it right. Constan, Constan, Casanova, thank you. Um, so we had an argument on the way to the hospital. Um, and I was asking him to take me to a particular hospital, and he told me, no, we're gonna go to the closest hospital. I asked again as I got in the ambulance, and he said, um, ma'am, uh, the way your tongue is swelling, we, I'm scared that your airway is gonna close before I can get you to anywhere, so please comply. And if, when you make it through this, um, I'm happy for you to cuss me out at that time. And so, those are not the words I'm gonna be using, but it is words of thanks. Um, because obviously they are paid to do a job, but not only do they do that job, but they do that job with such care and such compassion. And, uh, I am grateful to be alive today. And so, uh, I thank you for that. And I think it just is a testament to what we here at Shelby County, when we talk about we have some of the best employees uh, in this region and the state and in the country, uh, as a firsthand witness of that, I would like to just thank each of you for your service. CAO Collins, you want to say something before we, um, take our picture? Because he also has a special treat for you. The mayor has, the mayor has more money in his budget, so he can give out little, little trinkets and treats, so thank you, CAO.
You would say that in budget season. Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. Um, it's, I don't believe in happenstance or coincidences. So, uh, when we reached out to Commissioner Avant, uh, to see if we can do this, she was already having the wheels turning. And so we wanted to make sure that we could have a joint resolution, and Mayor Harris sends his unwavering support and congratulations to you all. We always talk about how important it is for you all to receive the training that you do. Never, never would we have known that on that night, I would get a phone call about Commissioner Avant. And knowing what you all did that evening allows her now to be here with her family, but with us as well. And we can't thank you enough for your dedication, your hard work, and your commitment to preserving the citizens and the property of Shelby County Government and all of our community. So thank you so very much. We hope this will never be, uh, um, adequate for the work that you all have done, but on, from, from a grateful administration, we want to say thank you. And we, we just love you all. Thank you all so much.
So, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, it's also just a moment of point of privilege, uh, Chair Waley, if it's okay, because my sister was there. Obviously, um, we had just had dinner, and so she was at the hospital, and she probably has had more conversation with these folks and others. So I would like to ask her to come be in the picture with us. Um, I was obviously put under, and so she, she was really hands-on and, and just talked about how grateful. She had already written down every name of every one of these folks who helped that night. Um, and so when I reached out and it was just like, yeah, these are the men, um, and women who, who cared for me. So, um, thank you for allowing me that point of privilege, Chair Waley.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, uh, Vice Chair Avant for bringing that, and, and of course, our heartfelt thanks to everyone at Shelby County Fire who helped. Uh, and Jamie, too, thank you. Uh, it's certainly a blessing, uh, but wouldn't be possible without the dedication of the men and women, uh, who are here with us today. So thank you all very much. All right, Madam Parliamentarian, please read, uh, item number four.
Item four is a resolution honoring Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioner Thornton. Uh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna ask Pastor Horton to come down. It's good to see Mr. Tate as well. Colleagues, I'm excited to, um, present to you, um, Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church, which is one of the congregations within District Ten. And so we have before us Pastor Horton, who, um, presides over this congregation, and I just want to educate everyone on another great, um, church within our district. So, Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church traces its humble beginnings to the home of Miss Ella Gray on Ayers Street. In the early nineteen seventies, members could be seen in a neighboring house, rolling up newspapers to sell, raising funds to send both church and neighborhood children to Friendship Camp, which is a summer program that was focused on survival skills, faith, and fellowship for youth across the tri-state area. The Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church efforts are more than just acts of charity. They are a living expression of Longview's commitment to the Great Commission. Go ye therefore and teach all nations, from Matthew twenty-eight nineteen. Pastor Alex Horton became the pastor in twenty fourteen and began his life's journey in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. He preached, um, the everlasting gospel in the Southwest Territory for over twenty-seven years, saying that prayer is a secret to his accomplishments. Pastor Horton submitted to divine leading from Birmingham, Alabama to Memphis, Tennessee, prophesying that the Longview Heights family would grow into disciples of the Kingdom of God. And throughout all the adversities and challenges that churches face today, Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church has grown spiritually, numerically, and in service. They remain steadfast in their faith while looking forward with the same zeal as the saints of old to the soon return of our Lord. Until this glorious day, Longview Heights, Longview Heights Seventh-day Adventist Church is devoted to serving, teaching, and inspiring community and beyond. And so
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very exciting moment. During the storms that we recently had and the flooding, there was a young man that was all up and down my timeline for doing some pretty noteworthy actions. He was seen actually unclogging the drains within his residence, and it was just really cool to see. And so as I was reading the comments and just seeing just how people were celebrating him, I was like, we should just bring him to the county commission so he can keep this accolade train going. So unbeknownst to you, one of the state representatives also wants to recognize you. So this young man before you is Mr. Kadarius Smith. You'll get to hear from him in a second, and I would dare say, is this your first resolution? Yeah, so we're just excited to have you here. So he's an 11th grader at Woodville High School and is turning 18 years old this year. He played football for a few years with East Memphis Vikings, and has also traveled with the team out of town for championship games and more. His grandmother helps tend... he helps his grandmother tend to her yard, pulling weeds, raking leaves, picking up trash, or whatever else she requires assistance with. He goes door to door and removes people's trash for them, cleans off their porches, and even washes their cars and cuts down their bushes. His acts of kindness went viral for unclogging and holding several feet of water in the Cambridge Station condominium complex, where he lives with his mom in Memphis, Tennessee. The storms brought devastating loss and severe flooding to the area, and his quick thinking and determination helped keep his neighbors safe. His goal is to be an entrepreneur, and during the hot summer months, he established a car wash to earn himself income. Where you can also find Kadarius with a cooler selling cold water to drivers and cleaning headlights and windows as they stop at traffic lights. His clear passion, drive, and determination are inspiring, and it is so befitting for us today to be able to recognize the honorable and courageous acts of Kadarius "Kendrell" Smith for his compassion and benevolence conducted throughout his community. So if you would, please help me in celebrating this young talent that we have here in Shelby County.
First, I would like to say thank you for being here. I didn't think much of it, I just saw what nobody else did, and just did what anybody else would try to do with help and get my mom back to the house.
Thank you so much, young man, for being here. Keep it up. We appreciate your service. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton, for bringing that resolution today. Next, we will go to general comment. So if I call your name, you may come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Latisha Williams, from Memphis Mecca. If you'll come on down, just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Hey, how y'all doing today? My name is Latisha Williams. My address is 93 Waswinds Road, 38109. So I'm here on behalf of Memphis Mecca. We are a public benefit corporation focused on economic development and community transformation here in Memphis. We don't just run programs. We reclaim spaces that have been forgotten and turn them into long-term assets for the people who live around them. Our focus is sustainable change that drives opportunity, pride, and growth in historically overlooked neighborhoods. So our first anchor project would be the revitalization of the Lamar Theater. As you know, the Lamar Theater has been a long vacant landmark in South Memphis. We are restoring it into a fully active community space, one that reflects the history of the area while creating a future-forward use that brings people together and generates real value for the neighborhood. So we're in phase one now. We're working on site assessments, demolition, and preparing the property for renovation. We've met with city council members, spoken with private investors, and reached out to each of you to request meetings, because we believe this is the kind of project that deserves county and city support. This isn't a feel-good story. It's a strategic investment in South Memphis, one that checks every box of blight, elimination, economic stimulation, and neighborhood restoration. I just want to say that one thing that we're focused on is bringing our underserved communities back to life. It's been too long, and if anybody that can drive down South Memphis, North Memphis, some of these underserved communities, there is a lot of blight, it's a lot of dilapidated buildings, nothing is going on over there. There are not enough resources out there, a lot of places for our youth to go to. Boys and Girls Club, which I was a part of in my youth, they're closing down. Our youth don't have a place to go to be able to redirect their attention from the quote-unquote crime. So we need this. We need the backing of the county, of the city, and we need that money pouring back into our community so our youth can get the resources that they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Remember, we're going to start doing thumbs up so that we make sure that everyone can hear, but thank you for being here today. Next up, we have Laramie Wheeler. Come on down, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
If I may speak, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to applaud Ms. Latisha Williams for just your tenacity to be able to get the resources that you need for your project. I'm following what Memphis Mecca is doing and look forward to bringing this project more to the forefront of the commission. So thank you for being here and being so responsive. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laramie Wheeler, and I work for Just City, 240 Madison Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38103. At Just City, we receive a lot of mail from those who are experiencing 201 Poplar, and I am here to read another letter. Respectfully, I ask that you pay attention to what I'm about to read. I am standing here as a voice for those experiencing 201 Poplar, those who have lived here for years, those who have died in their cells. One of the most recent deaths at 201 Poplar was Courtney Berry, whose home was in your district, Commissioner Ford Jr. And Sherman Weekly, who died by suicide in February, was in your district, Commissioner Thornton. And to all of you, these are your constituents, like me, like everyone in the room, and the decisions that you make or don't make affect them and their families. What you do is an incredible, incredible work, and it's very heavy, so please pay attention and listen to this letter. Hello, Laramie Wheeler. This is March 27, 2025. I am located on the second floor, and just last Sunday, on the 23rd, I was rushed to the hospital because of the heat problem we've been having. It had been out for more than a week. They said at the Medplex, I had a heart stroke, or a heat stroke, and I came in here in this jail on October 9, 2019. And I had a pair of prescription glasses. They got misplaced for some reason, and they won't get me a pair to see out clearly. The only thing they gave me was a cheap pair of reading glasses. I just got back from the hospital on Wednesday, the 26th. I was too weak to walk, and I have many more serious health conditions, and I'm on mental health medication. I would also like to note that this person did not wake up in the hospital until the next day after suffering heat stroke. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wheeler, for being here today. Next, we have Tamika Williams. All right, good afternoon, Ms. Williams. Just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamika Williams. I'm here on behalf of Juvenile Court at 616 Adams. And let's see here, my name is Tamika Williams, and I'm here today as a follow-up to a concern raised during the last commission meeting, specifically at the request of Commissioner Brittany Thornton to Director Gerald Thornton regarding my situation at Juvenile Court. Since that time, I've made multiple efforts to seek clarity and resolution, yet I have not received any updates or responses to the serious issues I raised. So today, I return seeking the accountability and action that this body is charged with upholding. I have proudly served Shelby County for several years with integrity and professionalism and no disciplinary actions prior to this current administration. While Juvenile Court is now led by Judge Tarek Sugarman, my direct experiences and the retaliation I'm facing are the result of actions by two individuals, Chief Administrative Officer Stephanie Hill and Director of Data and Research Jessica Dryden. Before they assumed their current leadership roles, I filed a formal complaint against both Ms. Hill and Ms. Dryden I had worked under them directly, supported their onboarding, and fulfilled every duty asked of me, even training Ms. Dryden when she first was hired. After my complaints were filed, not only were they promoted, but I became a direct target of retaliation. My job as a research specialist wasn't eliminated, it was renamed. The work continues, the duties remain, but I was issued a letter on April 11 stating I must vacate my position by May 15, even though others were moved laterally into their positions, which would have been a more economical and fiscally responsible option for the county, especially since I was already performing those duties. This is not about restructuring, it's about retaliation. I've served in data analysis, research, and IT support, often performing the work of three roles for over six months, yet I was never reclassified, never fairly compensated, and never given an opportunity to appeal. This is a violation of TCA Code 50-1304, Tennessee's Public Protection Act, which prohibits retaliation for refusing to stay silent about wrongdoing in Shelby County Civil Service Policy 6.6, which requires additional compensation when employees take on duties beyond their jobs class for more than six months, which makes this situation even more concerning... excuse me. What makes this situation even more concerning is that the court's own Human Resources Director, Janika Oglesby, reports directly to Stephanie Hill, the very person I filed a complaint against. This is a clear conflict of interest that undermines fairness and due process. Instead of being supported, I was silenced by Ms. Hill, was allowed to... excuse me. Instead of being supported, I was silenced. Ms. Hill was allowed to oversee and dismiss her own complaint while advancing herself and removing me. That's not just unethical, it undermines every safeguard this government claims to uphold. I come before the commission today not just to speak truth, but to ask for help.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Hang on one second, because we have a commissioner in the queue. Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for coming up and speaking. You're not the only one. I won't name others, because they wanted to be anonymous, because they didn't want extra retaliation to happen to them. This isn't the first time employees have come down regarding that. Now, Chair, I don't know what this body can do as far as HR is concerned, but what this body has done is, when electors do come down, and they talk about how they want to help out the working poor, et cetera, et cetera, you know, all the good stuff, so they can get a vote. I found out through these monthly statements that I keep getting regarding people's salaries and their positions and whatnot, that where the money is supposed to go is not going back to the working poor on most occasions. And my challenge has been, when I looked at the last group of individuals out of the February list, there are some, not just in this division, but other divisions, that have gotten a... even though their salary might be the same, their position has been diminished. And there have been other positions that have been either created or emphasized more to where a reasonable person can say that money is going to those positions instead of the positions where the people have been there 10, 15, 20 years. I think we can do something regarding the dollars and cents piece. I don't know what this body can do regarding the HR piece, but I would like to find out what we can do before these budget deliberations happen, because this commission is not going to support any other electors when they say they want to come down and help the working poor, and they're really helping out other people. You have a person who just... this is my last comment. You have a person that just got elected, and I fully respect the person that they hired, but that person is now making $160,000. Could they do the job? Probably. But they didn't come down saying, I would like to hire somebody to make $160,000. I'd like to come down and help out the working poor who haven't had a raise since forever and a day. And then I found out, oh, you really didn't do that with the money. You actually did something else with the money. And now you back here next time talking the same talk and not walking that same walk. So if there's anything that I can do, we can have our conversation, because as far as giving money to electors, I've said that they should have free latitude within their budget, but sometimes they come and ask for additional money, and then it doesn't go where it's supposed to go. So my only one question to you in my 19 seconds, how many years have you worked in juvenile?
I've been there since 2017, and I was the data analyst. So any... most of the data reporting, the budget, all of that, I have insight to all of that. So I have a very unique position, and that's some of what... that's the issue. I don't... there she is. I don't follow suit with a lot of it, because we have to report to the Crime Commission. The integrity of the data is so important. I've never had an issue, but this... there needs to be a more in-depth conversation. Again, I don't want to be up here, it's not... I wish I didn't have to be up here. Again, there's no logic in the letter I was given, why my job is eliminated, when I've been doing internal websites, automating processes, database, just everything, and there have not been any complaints about my work. This stemmed from a complaint that went to the ELC.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Thank you again. Commissioner Thornton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a current ELC complaint that you filed?
So to answer your question...
Make sure you speak on the mic. Sorry, Ms. Williams, make sure you speak on the microphone.
I apologize. So for clarification, I received a right-to-sue letter, but because I was placed in the IT department, I do not like friction. I thought we were out of the river with that, but as soon as that year passed, because generally, if you... if they file a complaint, then you can come back and say it's retaliation. This happened, and I had been asking for really about three years for clarification, and the gentleman that I'm under, he said it too. He was like, we need clarification, because I have you doing this, you're doing it. But he was getting some pushback from others, because whenever I do my work, I deliver. He was... had me doing it, he would try to present it, and they would tell him, oh, she built this website. No, we don't want to do this. So I'm doing the work. You have people that literally do not... just don't want my work out there. But if that's the case, and if they can just fire me, then fire me. But that's not the case. They're calling it restructuring, but you've got another position paying more than I asked for, possibly, if it was warranted, a compensation. They renamed my position, the exact same duties, and... But they didn't come down saying, "I would like to hire somebody to make $160,000. I'd like to come down and help out the working poor who haven't had a raise since forever and a day." And then I found out, oh, you really didn't do that with the money, you actually did something else with the money. And now you back here next time talking the same talk and not walking that same walk. So if there's anything that I can do, we can have our conversation, because as far as giving money to electors, I've said that they should have free latitude within their budget, but sometimes they come and ask for addition, additional money, and then it doesn't go where it's supposed to go. So my only one question to you in my 19 seconds, how many years have you worked in juvenile?
I've been there since 2017, and I was the data analyst. So any -- most of the data reporting, the budget, all of that, I have insight to all of that. So I have a very unique position, and that's some of what -- that's the issue. I don't -- there she -- I don't follow suit with a lot of it, because we have to report to the crime commission. The integrity of the data is so important, I've never had an issue. But this, this, it, it, there needs to be a more in-depth conversation. Again, I don't want to be up here, it's not -- I wish I didn't have to be up here. Again, there's no logic in the letter I was given, why my job is eliminated, when I've been doing internal websites, automating processes, database, just everything, and there have not been any complaints about my work. This stemmed from a complaint that went to the ELC.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Thank you again. Commissioner Thornton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a current ELC complaint that you filed?
So, to answer your question--
Make sure you speak on the mic. Sorry, Ms. Williams, make sure you speak on the microphone.
I apologize. So, for clarification, I received a right-to-sue letter, but because I was placed in the IT department, I do not like friction. I thought we were out of the river with that, but as soon as that year passed, because generally, if you, if they file a complaint, then you can come back and say it's retaliation. This happened, and I had been asking for really about three years for clarification, and the gentleman that I'm under, he said it too. He was like, "We need clarification, because I have you doing this, you're doing it." But he was getting some pushback from others, because whenever I do my work, I deliver. He was, had me doing it, he would try to present it, and they would tell him, "Oh, she built this website, no, we don't want to do this." So I'm doing the work. You have people that literally do not, just don't want my work out there. But if that's the case, and if they can just fire me, then fire me. But that's not the case. They're calling it restructuring, but you've got another position paying more than I asked for, possibly, if it was warranted, a compensation. They renamed my position, the exact same duties and the one that I had prior to being promoted, data analyst, too. So you're taking the money, and you're creating two new positions when you've got somebody that's fully capable, that's been doing it. And anybody there would tell you that. They call me diligently, and I'm there.
So just to the chair, just trying to figure out purviews here, because we have a fellow elected, is this most appropriately taken up with Judge Sugarman? Do we have any type of decision-making authority in this particular case to legal? I just want to know what our purview is here, to be able to intervene, or how would you advise that we support her efforts? And if you could just be clear about what exactly do you need at this point? So are you waiting to hear a response from someone? Are you hoping that we can connect you to someone? How can we be of support?
The result that I'm looking for is a response. If this restructuring, what they're doing, is legal, the first thing I would like to see county policy that supports it. Secondly, I would like to either keep my current position and work professionally amongst the individuals that I'm around, because I'm not the one that's pushing the, or poking the bear, so to speak, or that I'm placed somewhere else where I can, if there's another position available, I literally will be out of a job that I've been serving for almost 10 years, because someone does not like me, if I may just be blunt. The letter that was given, the amount of effort behind it, it makes no sense.
Okay. And if I could, just for the sake of time, before I go back to legal, have you had any conversations with Judge Sugarman about this issue?
You can't get to him from her, and she's, and that's Stephanie Hill, when I say her. And she's the one who I work directly with, and we've had this ongoing belt thing going on. And I've remained professional and tried to stay out of the way, but that just has not happened. So if I could, I would be grateful.
So I'll just, I'll commit to attempting to set up a meeting with the two of you, so that you can try and get some of these questions answered. And then to legal, what is our purview on this? So can the commission do anything as it relates to this particular issue?
Marcy Ingram, County Attorney's Office. Commissioner, since this matter is pending litigation, it would not be in the purview of the county commission, and involves a different elected official office. What you all have purview over is, to the extent there are any issues with policy, you draft policies, and that would be your lane.
Okay. And so, hearing that, just take that into account, as we move forward, there's nothing that we can do as a body in this particular issue, but I will commit to being able to facilitate that connection between you and Judge Sugarman.
Can I interject?
All right. Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not pending litigation. That's something that happened prior to. That's an active open ELC lawsuit. I'm waiting for Richard Sherman to respond to. I have not gotten a response. This is not a litigation.
Okay. Thank you. We'll make, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. All right. We have a few more that I think want to speak. General comment, next one is Patrice Minner.
Hello. My name is Patrice Minner. I'm also an employee at Juvenile Court, 616 Adams Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38103. I'm similarly situated to my coworker, and I just wanted to share some things, because I've been here to the commission several times before. This is a clarion call to the public and to this commission. Ephesians 5 and 11 says, "Have no fellowship with the unfruitful works of darkness, but rather expose them." Dismantle the power at Juvenile Court. There's nepotism, there's secret societies there, they're doing spiritual work and rituals against employees, there's inappropriate relationships. It appears that Judge Sugarman brought his girlfriend to the court, and she has had problems with several other women, myself included. Mandate that Juvenile Court unionize employees. It appears that you have to go along to get along there. Memphis and Shelby County also needs to decide if they want to make money off of wayward and delinquent children, or try to resolve the crime problem in this city. I encourage this commission, DOJ, or anyone else to step in immediately, establish a permanent independent oversight committee. As stated, I have visited this commission several times in the past, highlighting major issues at the court. In 17 years, I have been able to successfully identify. A juvenile counselor entitled only was working in conflicting roles, which led to the creation of YDS. Two, I promoted a screening process for low-level offenders to educate and create awareness, which led to the creation of SRT summons review team. Three, I saw corruption in the court, where they were hijacking children through the system to pay for detention and court costs, and spoke on how individuals were stealing those funds. With the recent passing of the Parent Accountability Act, making mandate to charge families up to $1,000 per charge, the simple shredding of documents, there they will continue to steal, be able to steal money. Four, I advocated for an independent electronic monitor department recently -- I recently shared with management that every child is not a candidate for electronic monitor. This commission awarded $2.3 billion to make upgrades to employee positions, salaries, et cetera. It's been open season on veteran employees, ripping people's jobs away, the appearance of business, but behind the scenes, there is criminal activity taking place, they're embezzling those funds and sending them overseas. Shelby County government keeps covering up these issues. I have cracked the code every time. Right now, youth development counselors are standing in court giving false information about cases. I have witnessed it on four occasions. This last time, it was my case, and I addressed it with management, nothing was done. I've been targeted, I've had my job ripped away, and placed in an entry-level position after 17 years, because I spoke out and wasn't willing to look the other way.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming to speak. Your time is up. Next, I think on the same item, we have Karen Spencer McGee. You can come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Spencer McGee, lovingly known as Mama Peaches from Black Lives Matter Memphis. I cannot and will not give my address, but I can tell you I'm in two rounds, three down on Wenchmaw. I stand in solidarity with my sisters. There's open season on black women that stick up and stand out against things that are improper. When I called Judge Sugarman, and then I stopped him out there, Jordan is driving a Cadillac truck, he 15 years old, his buddies roll up in another expensive high-end truck. I said, "Go pick him up." Jordan is now dead. Three other children that have monitors on, don't you know they know how to take that thing off and put it on the cat and get out there and do what they want to do? So when I called Juvenile Court, oh, I go down there, and they say, "Oh, you don't have to sign in." Yes, I have to sign in, because I want you to know I was down there. I thank you for allowing these ladies to stand with me, because there are four other cases that I can't even talk about, because the boys are on the run, and I'm not going to turn them in, because Juvenile Court is not doing its job. It's worse now than the white folks had it. I said what I said, and it's time for you all to start listening to the seasoned people that's been down there that know the work. How you gonna put her in that entry level, and she been down there 17 years? How you gonna put her in a -- and then all the programs that, not just because she's my good-girlfriend, it's because I love children, she know I love children, and we go and hatch it up on my porch to say, "Look, this is what this little boy need. This is what this little boy -- I'm an advocate for children. I don't care none about grown folks, because y'all got problems." But I stand here today and say that we gonna shut down if some don't, don't do something about this. You can get a $25 million hotel, and made children are getting out for school, and we don't have nowhere for them to go? What in the hell is going on in Memphis Shelby County, where you think children are expendable? Get it right, y'all. And I got 58 more seconds, but I got somebody else to stand with. I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired, and children are dying, and the blood is gonna be on these folks' hands, because we come to our elected officials. If you elected, you elected. If you selected, you need to get the hell out of here. This has gone on long enough.
Can I use part of her time?
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for being here today. Commissioners, we're now at the review of the consent agenda, so if you'll please take three minutes to review the consent, and if there are any items that you wish to have pulled. I'm sorry, Commissioner Brooks. Go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
Excuse me, ma'am. Real quick, do you have your information reduced to writing, or where I can make a copy of your complaint? Do you have your complaint in writing? I'd like to get a copy of your complaint.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Madam Clerk, please put three minutes on the clock. Commissioners, please review the consent agenda, if there are any items you wish to All right, Commissioner Caswell.
Item number 26.
Okay, item 26. Commissioner Brooks.
Items 10 and 21.
Okay, 10 and 21. Okay, Vice Chair Yvonne.
Item 15.
15. Commissioner Wright.
Item number 28, please.
Okay.
Items 9 and 14.
Okay. 9, 14. Okay. All right. So Commissioners, we're going to pull items 9, 10, 14, 15, 21, 26, 28. All right, Madam Parliamentarian, please read the consent agenda, with the exception of the items pulled.
Item 7 comes from the Budget and Finance Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item 7 is a resolution receiving and filing the March 2025 Monthly Comprehensive Financial Update Reports entitled Shelby County Government Monthly Commission Division Reports for the Year Ending June 30, 2025, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs. Item 8 comes from the Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Bradford. Item 8 is a resolution to accept the public improvements and to release the subdivision performance bond cashier's check dated June 18, 2021, that secured the improvements to Cardova Ridge PD Fourth Amendment Phase II Parcel IIB PD 09-302 CC, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Items 11 through 13 come from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item 11 is a resolution to approve contract with Second Chances Foundation, Inc., DBA Mid-South Sober Living, in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of recovery, supportive housing services for men on behalf of the Shelby County Drug Court, Veterans Court, and Mental Health Court for the period commencing with the execution of the contract through June 30, 2025, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods in the amount of $283,000. This item requires expenditure of FY 2025 grant funds in an amount not to exceed $100,000, sponsored by Commissioner McWright. Item 12 is a resolution to approve the expenditure of funds for the purchase of cloud storage and support for body-worn cameras, in-car video systems from Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the Shelby County Sheriff's Office. This item requires expenditure of FY 2025 Shelby County Sheriff's Office general operating funds in the amount not to exceed $485,100, sponsored by Commissioner McWright. Item 13 is a resolution to amend the FY 2025 operating budget to expend grant funds from the State of Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security Tennessee Highway Safety Office. This item requires appropriation expenditure of federal through state grant funds in the amount of $35,000, sponsored by Commissioner McWright. Item 16 comes from the Community Services Committee with Commissioner Bradford as acting chair. Item 16 is a resolution amending the FY 2025 grant fund operating budget in the amount of $6,700 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, to utilize grant funds from the Tennessee Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence, the Coalition for providing direct emergency assistance for victims of crime. This item requires the appropriation expenditure of FY 2025 grant funds in the amount of $6,700, sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell Jr. Item 17 comes from the General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 17 is a resolution approving the election of Norese Public for appointment and a reappointment for Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Items 18 and 19 come from the Core City Neighborhoods and Housing Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 18 is a resolution approving the conveyance of two county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County, from Shelby County tax sales numbers 1102 and 1503 to the town of Arlington for nominal consideration for the use and the conservation of green space in the vicinity of the town of Arlington's wastewater treatment plant pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5 to 2507 B1A, and authorizing the county mayor to execute a quitclaim deed, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item 19 is a resolution approving the sale of 98 county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County from various Shelby County tax sales to identified purchasers at various prices collectively totaling $255,750 pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5 to 2507, and authorizing the Shelby County mayor to execute a claim deed, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item 20 comes from the Audit Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item 20 is a resolution receiving and filing the Third Quarter Report of the Shelby County Trustee for the Year Ending June 30, 2025, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs. Items 22 through 25 and 27 come from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item 22 is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $134,000 to School Seed Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $134,000 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton. Item 23 is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $5,000 to Collierville Education Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $5,000 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item 24 is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $2,500 to Tennessee National Black Caucus Memphis Delta Chapter, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $2,500 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowry. Item 25 is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $22,000 to Item twenty-five is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $22,000 to North Shelby Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7175, a nonprofit organization. This item requires an expenditure of $22,000 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Amber Mills. Item twenty-seven is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $2,500 to Campbell Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $2,500 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lowry, did you need to move, pull something else?
Yeah, I apologize before you take the motion. Item number twenty-four, please.
Twenty-four?
I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. All right, we get a mover and seconder on the consent agenda with the exception of the items pulled. Moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. All right, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on the consent agenda minus those items pulled. Yeah. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, and Chairman Weyler. We have eleven eye votes.
Okay, consent passes. Item number nine.
Item nine comes from the Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Bradford. Item nine is a resolution approving contract with ABES Contracting LLC in the amount of $1,196,000 and an extra work allowance in the amount of $120,000 for a total amount of $1,316,000 for the sewer rehabilitation project from the American Rescue Plan Water Infrastructure Grant Funds. This item requires the appropriation of State American Rescue Plan Grant Funds in the amount of $1,316,000, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Item nine is moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Bradford, can we get a committee report?
Yes, sir. Committee met, and this comes down to favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anyone which will speak on this item, since it was pulled? Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. If you could just speak about this rehabilitation project and what the particular extra work allowance is for.
Chris Mason, Shelby County Engineering. This resolution awards a construction contract to ABES Contracting for the American Rescue Plan Water Infrastructure Grant Sewer Rehabilitation Project. It consists of the rehabilitation of four aging sewer pump stations. The pump stations are located at Sledge Road, Armor Road, Chart Ridge Drive, and Mount Piscata School. This ARP grant program has a match calculated based on ability-to-pay index. Per this formula, a match of fifteen percent has been applied to Shelby County's grant allocation. However, Shelby County has funded a significant portion of the design and the program management services with local funds that are being applied to this match. Thus, the match is, an allocation is not needed with this appropriation. Local preferences are not applied to State of Tennessee grant funds, however, the contractor is both a minority business enterprise and a locally-owned small business. Specifically, Shelby County has six lift stations total in our unincorporated area. This is to rehabilitate three of them and to turn one into a gravity system, thus eliminating the lift station altogether.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. All right, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote. Item number nine. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Weyler. We have twelve eye votes.
All right, item nine passes. Item number ten.
Item ten comes from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item ten is a resolution to accept a state grant in the amount of $62,500 and to amend the FY 2025 operating budget to expend grant funds in the amount of $62,500 from the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs and approve the expenditure of funds for the Themis Center for Justice Policy Practice and Research to Conduct an Impact Study. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY 2025 state grant funds in the amount of $62,500, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
All right, item ten is moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman, can we have a committee report?
It was favorable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Thanking Mr. Chairman, to the sponsor, if I may, this company, is this a locally-owned company? And can you give me some information about what this company does?
Okay, I think we've got someone who can help answer that question right here, if you like.
Okay. Just, is this a locally-owned company? Can you tell me something about this company?
Hang on one second, Commissioner Brooks. I think we may have an issue with the microphone. Is there a button that's green on the side of it?
That's better.
There we go, okay.
Adrian Daly-Evans, Sheriff Department's Finance Administrator. And to answer your question, this particular contract, this is not a, this is an independent study that's the state approved to add additional $62,500 to the grant. The grant originally has already, there's over $267,000 that has already been approved by this body and another $189,000 of that grant for equipment. This is additional funds that the state decided to award so that they could do a study of the switch program, and this body has already funded that portion of the program.
Okay.
For FY 24, 25.
So are the other programs being conducted by just, by this Themis Center for Justice Policy?
Ma'am.
Are the other programs under the auspices of Themis Center for Justice Policy?
This is the program that the state awarded for them for this particular grant.
Oh, it was awarded by the state?
Yes.
This company?
For this expenditure, for this company, yes. And they're doing an independent study to evaluate the, how well effective the program is and the impact the program is having. And the basis of the program is to reduce gun violence in high-risk youth.
Okay, so you said something that caught my attention, switch. Is that under allies also, under youth villages?
It's under youth villages.
I see. Thank you.
As you look at Exhibit B, the summary, it does show the expenditures that have already been approved by this body, and this is an additional amount that was awarded as an expenditure.
Right, that wasn't my question. I was just concerned that we were not utilizing a locally-owned company, but since we are taking dictation and orders from the state, yeah, no further questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just wanted to put on the record that this group is doing an evaluation of my employer, so I'll be recusing on this item. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just sneezed. The results of the, let me get my wording right, the results of the impact study, will those be made available to the commission?
Adrian Daly-Evans, Sheriff Department Finance Administrator. That information will be provided, it's an assessment that the state awarded us to weight the effectiveness of the program, and I'm sure we make the inquiry to provide us a copy of the study, since we are hosting this particular program and the funds are being awarded to the sheriff's office, we will have privilege to have copies of that. So the answer is yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, once the study is completed, please provide a copy of it to the Board of Commissioners.
The complete body?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item ten. All right, we can either close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Weyler. Commissioner Wright has recused. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. Have nine eyes, one recused, and one abstained.
All right, item ten passes. Item number fourteen.
Item fourteen comes from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item fourteen is a resolution to amend the FY 2025 grant operating budget to expend supplemental federal grant funds in the amount of $60,000 from the Office of National Drug Control Policy for the purpose of disrupting the commerce of illegal drugs through Shelby County for a total award in the amount of $278,603. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY 2025 federal grant funds in the amount of $60,000, sponsored by Commissioner McRight.
Okay, thank you. If we can get a mover and seconder. Moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Sugarman, can we have a committee report?
Yes, it was favorable.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Chair. Is there someone who can speak on this item? I more so have a question just about how we plan to achieve this purpose of disrupting the commerce of illegal drugs. What, I mean, it's a small figure, so what can these funds do towards that goal? And where are we at in trying to address that particular issue?
Well, basically, the funds, the amount of $6,000 will be used to supplement overtime. It's a partnership between the city of Memphis and the sheriff's office, and that the whole purpose of it is to disrupt the sale and transportation of illegal drugs. So it's a partnership that we'll be paying the supplement, any overtime associated with this project. They awarded us funds to cover the overtime.
Sorry, will you just state your name and title again for the record?
Sorry, Adrian Daly-Evans, Sheriff Department Finance Administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just as a follow-up, what are they putting in overtime doing? Like, is this just regular law enforcement, or is this a targeted effort?
Well, there are specific targeted areas, but basically this is to conduct, just in general, overtime activity that will disrupt the sale and transportation of illegal drugs and dismantle the drug organizations. So it's like, whatever various overtime associated with fighting drugs or crimes, that's what this covers. So that means overtime is supplemented versus coming out of our general operating budget. This grant would fund that overtime.
And when we evaluate how well we are at doing this, what type of metrics are we using to determine where we are?
Specifically, what are you asking?
I mean, this disruption of the commerce of illegal drugs. There's a new drug.
I can't speak to the actual process within the law enforcement, both from MPD and sheriff's office, as it relates to that specifically. However, I'm only speaking to the fact the funds were awarded, and this is funds that were awarded by the states in order to reimburse overtime, so that overtime is not incurred by the Shelby County or the MPD for those services that go overtime to, for the various activities. But specifically, what those are, I don't have the information.
Yeah, if you could just follow up.
Sure.
I don't think that, my questions have been very well answered tonight, just to get a better understanding of what we're paying for in overtime. So what are we getting in the overtime pay? What were we working towards? Like, what?
Okay, would you like to know specifically what activities are being funded that incurred overtime? That's what you need? So I want to make sure I get you what you need.
Yeah, I mean, any additional information would be helpful. Specifically, I'm just trying to figure out what is our assessment of the issue and where are we in being able to disrupt this illegal drug commerce that we've identified as an issue? Like, any more data on this particular topic would be helpful, as it directly is impacting my life and my community right now, and I would just love to see, you know, how we're tackling this particular issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item fourteen. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Weyler. We have thirteen eye votes.
Item fourteen passes. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen comes from the Land Use Planning, Transportation, and Code Enforcement Committee with Commissioner Bradford as vice chair. Item fifteen is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, waiving the time lapse requirement of subsection 9.6.13A of the Unified Development Code to allow applicant of case known as PD 2023-008 to refile a similar application for consideration by the Memphis and Shelby County Land Use Control Board and the Shelby County Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioner Amber Mills.
All right, thank you. Item fifteen moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Bradford, can we have a committee report?
This item comes down to favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Avant.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just trying to understand from the sponsor the need for us to have the consideration waived, or to be able to refile through the chairman, to the sponsor.
Okay, Commissioner Mills, are you able to answer that? Okay.
Sure. This is not my district. It neighbors my district, and I was reached out to and said happy to help, but go to the commissioner in the district. In my understanding, if he would like to speak to it, they got it worked out in agreement, so this would allow it to go through the whole process again. That's all that it is. Does that answer it?
Okay, Commissioner Bradford.
This is in my district, so if you all remember, we had this item come before us, gosh, it's probably been at least a year ago, and there was a couple of neighbors that did not like the development, but they also were a little confused on what the development was. We voted it down. Since then, the developer has met with the neighborhood and met with the families and have given them a better understanding of what it is, changed up what they're doing a little bit to better understand it. So everyone is on board with it now. With the way our process is set up, he is still not allowed to apply for another four or five years, and so what this does, allow him to restart the process. It doesn't give him anything right to do. He's just got to go back to the Land Use Control Board, have the public meetings and that kind of stuff, and so it just restarts the process for him.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item fifteen. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Weyler. We have thirteen eye votes.
All right, item fifteen passes. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item twenty-one is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $7,500 to South Memphis Renewal Community Development Corporation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $7,500 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-one moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman, can we have a committee report?
It was favorable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you. I'd like to add $12,500.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
$12,500.
Okay, twelve, all right, $12,500, that it was seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Can we do that without objection? Okay, hearing none, so that new total will be twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand, all right, thank you. Commissioner Morrison.
Thank you. I know there's been ongoing work for the grants process and all, but because of the concerns that we've, that have been raised by the public, going forward, I've made a decision to abstain on the, on the, and I'm not going to be a broken record at every request, but that's the reasoning behind my abstention. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Morrison. So new amended total on item twenty-one is 20,000. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item twenty-one as amended. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, A. Van, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Morrison has abstained. Have 12 eyes and one abstained.
All right, item 21 passes. Item 24.
Item 24 comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item 24 is a resolution awarding county funds in the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $2,500 to Tennessee National Black Caucus Memphis Delta Chapter, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $2,500 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Mckell Lowry.
All right, item 24 moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Sugarman, committee report?
It was favorable.
Great, all right, Commissioner Lowry.
Thank you. I'd like to amend by 1,000.
Okay, Commissioner Lowry's moved to amend by 1,000, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Can we do that without objection? All right, hearing none, the new amended total is 3,500. Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 24 as amended. New total is 33,500. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry.
Chair, can you mark me as a yes? My screen's not working.
Correction. We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, A. Van, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Morrison has abstained. Have 11 eyes and one abstained.
Okay. Item 24 passes. Item 26.
I'm on the board, Mr. Chairman, for this item.
Sorry, Commissioner Brooks.
Point of personal privilege, for the record, I think in our statements on this body, we need to be accurate in our comments. And in terms of the last item regarding the Milton Community Grants, there has not been an outcry from the public in reference to the Milton Community Grant Program. There may have been some second-gassing or some backing up by members of this body, which had nothing to do with the effectiveness, validity, and integrity of the program. It's all around one person. So I think we need to be a little bit careful in what we're seeing about the, what the public is seeing about a program that goes to help grassroots organizations that are helping communities in need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Item 26.
Item 26 comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item 26 is a resolution awarding county funds in the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $10,000 to African Heritage and Culture Village of Memphis, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $10,000 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell Jr. and Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr., amended in April 30, 2025, committee meeting.
All right, item 26 moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Sugarman, can we, can we report?
It was favorable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clay Bibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add 3,500 to that item.
Okay, it's been moved to amend by 3,500, seconded by Commissioner Clay Bibbs, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. If we can do that without objection, that's now amended, so the new amended total is 13,500. Thank you. Commissioner Caswell.
Yeah, I'd like to add 1,500.
Okay. Commissioner Caswell's moved to amend by 1,500, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. If we can do that without objection, the new amended total is 15,000. Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Lowry.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to amend by 2,500.
Okay, Commissioner Lowry moves to amend by 2,500, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. If we can do that without objection, the new amended total is 17,500. Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
Chair, the gentleman who is over this organization is here. I did not know if he wanted to speak or not. Okay, he wants to stay in his seat and say thank you, okay.
Okay, all right.
I yield back.
Thank you so much. So new amended total here is 17,500. This is the amended total on item 26. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 26 as amended.
Again, Chair, my screen is still not working, so.
All right. We'll make sure we.
Yes.
Show Commissioner Sugarman as a yes.
Bradford, Thornton, Lowry, A. Van, and Chairman Whaley. We have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Morrison has abstained. Have 11 eyes and one abstained.
Okay, item 26 passes. Item 28.
Item 28 comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item 28 is a resolution awarding county funds in the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $7,500 to the American Public Education Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $7,500 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
All right, item 28 moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Sugarman.
It was favorable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend by 5,000.
Okay, Commissioner Wright has moved to amend by 5,000, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. If we can do that without objection, the new total will be 12,500. All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Wright. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 28 as amended. The new total is 12,500.
And Chair, put me down as yes again.
All right, we will. Okay, we can now close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Lowry, A. Van, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Morrison has abstained. We have 11 eyes and one abstained.
Okay, item 28 passes. All right, item number 29.
Item 29 is an ordinance on third reading, so once it's properly before us, I ask that you allow me to read the summary into the record. Item 29 is, comes from the General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 29 ordinance, third reading ordinance approving and setting the salary for the Board of County Commissioners for Shelby County, Tennessee, for the 2026 through 2030 term of office to account for inflation effective after the August 2026 election. Sponsored by Commissioner Eric Sugarman. The site was deferred in April 14, 2025, commission meeting.
Okay, item 29 is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Brooks is out. If there's someone that can give us a committee report, Commissioner Sugarman.
It was favorable.
Okay, I think actually this was deferred, this didn't go through committee. Yep. Okay, so this item is on third reading, so we're going to have to read the summary. Madam Parvatarian, please read the summary for item 29.
Just give me one second to find the summary. As this item is less than two typewritten pages, I can read the ordinance in its entirety and to the record. So, whereas Shelby County Commissioners have not received a salary increase since 2021 despite rising inflation and the increased cost of living, and whereas inflation reduces purchasing power, meaning that the same salary today does not provide the same level of economic security as it did in 2021, and whereas according to the U.S. Inflation Calculator, the cumulative inflation rate from 2021 to 2024 is approximately 16.47%, significantly impacting the financial stability of elected officials serving the county. Whereas, the current annual salary for Shelby County Commissioners is $34,900, and applying the cumulative inflation rate results in an adjusted salary of approximately $40,652 to maintain the same purchasing power as in 2021. And whereas fair and competitive compensation is necessary to attract and retain qualified individuals who dedicate their time and expertise to public service, and whereas Shelby County Charter Article II, Section 2.04A, authorized the county commissioners to set the salary and expense account for the successive Board of County Commissioners, provided however that the salary cannot be changed during the term for which the county commissioners were elected or after January 1 of the year in which the county commissioners is to be elected. And whereas it is the desire of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to set the annual salary for the successive Board of County Commissioners for 2026 through 2030 term of office, which shall begin on September 1, 2026. And whereas, effective September 1, 2026, following the August 2026 election, the annual salary for Shelby County Board of Commissioners shall be increased to $40,652 to account for inflation and maintain fair compensation. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, that salary of the successive Board of County Commissioners for the term of office beginning September 1, 2026 be and is hereby approved and set at $40,652 annually. Be it further ordained that if any clause, section, paragraph, sentence, or part of this ordinance shall be held or declared to be unconstitutional and void, it shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance, it being hereby declared to be the legislative intent of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to have passed the remainder of this ordinance, notwithstanding the part so held unconstitutional void if any. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall be adopted upon receiving a two-thirds vote of the membership of the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Article II, Section 2.06(c)(3) of the Charter of Shelby County. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall become effective 15 days after the date of its passage in accordance with the Shelby County Charter, Article II, Section 2.06(c)(4), the public will fare, welfare requiring same.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. And so I just want to state for the public that there are a couple of reasons why I proposed this ordinance to increase the next elected officials running for office. First of all, this accounts for inflation only, not the cost of living adjustment. And the other reason is because we want, you know, additional people to run for office for this position in particular, because we've seen what happened before when you have a very, a few people running as opposed to giving, opening up the, for, you know, other people to run who may not be able to afford to run because it's so low, it's 34,900. The other thing is that I want to state on the record is that, again, you know, this does take effect until the next county commissioners. The cost of living is, you know, extremely high, it's going up and up and up. And people say, well, this is a part-time job. I promise you, a lot of these commissioners up here do not work part-time. You know, I work weekends, I work sometimes 11, 12, 1 o'clock at night at the commission. Even Mayor Harris indicated at one time, my goodness, you know, he's the hardest working person in Shelby County. And one of my colleagues said, are you a robot? It is a lot of work, and it's not part-time, it's full-time. Having said that, I urge my colleagues to increase the pay. And again, it's still not what it should be, but it's better than nothing, and it's just a cost of living, it's not a cost of living adjustment, just to address inflation. So I urge my colleagues to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, and I'm proud of being the super minority on this item if I go by what others have done on the first and second reading. So I have a couple of questions through the chair to Ms. Ingram. Ms. Ingram, if this item does not pass, if a commissioner decided that they wanted to bring it back, would it be 90 days after the vote if this vote does not receive the nine votes that's required for an increase?
Marcy Ingram, County Attorney's Office. Commissioner, the rules require if the item fails, before the minutes are read at the next meeting, someone on the prevailing side can ask for reconsideration. If that doesn't happen, your rule requires a 90-day waiting period after an item fails, but that rule can always be suspended.
Okay, and that would require nine to correct through the chair?
I'm gonna defer to your.
Or is that super majority, present and voting?
I believe it's present and voting, and if I'm incorrect, I defer to your parliamentarian.
To the parliamentarian through the chair?
Yes, sir. The proposed ordinance says a two-thirds vote of the membership, so that's at least nine to pass.
We're asking about the reconsideration piece now, parliamentarian.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention to that part. Okay, so yes, that's present and vote.
All right, and this type of ordinance would have to be ratified before December 31st, is that correct? If a commissioner decided to bring it back in another form or after the 90 days if there's no reconsideration?
Marcy Ingram, County Attorney's Office. Yes, Commissioner Ford, the charter requires it be done before January 1 of the incoming year of any elected official, the salary is changing.
Okay, to the sponsor, I don't think you have nine. I am a supporter, but you heard the options, so we shall see what happens. When we did have this increase four years ago, it was stated that there was a 10-year gap where there was no increase. As a matter of fact, there was a 5% decrease that was done by this body, I want to say in 2010, to where we end up using the Social Security Administration's COLA to determine what the new salary should be, but things are different. So this doesn't affect me, but I understand what you're trying to do for the purposes of trying to do the same thing we did four years ago, but I don't see it passing. I will be a supporter, but at least you know what your options are if you or anybody else decide to try again before December 31st. So they would also need to put in the readings and the time and place before December 31st in order to make it happen. So that's all I have, Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Chair. This is for the attorney through the chair, and so, again, so if it fails and the prevailing side decides to bring it back after the 90 days, at that point, are you saying that we only need two-thirds votes of people who are present and voting? Or can you, again, re, parliamentarian through the chair?
Yep. So, so I think the question was around if it fails today, it can be reconsidered at our next meeting before the minutes are read. That reconsideration would be subject to two-thirds present and voting?
Present and voting?
Suspend the rule to hear it.
Oh, but then at that point in time, through the chair to the parliamentarian, we still need two-thirds vote to, for this to pass, correct?
And that is, that is of the membership, so that is not a present and vote. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. All right, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 29.
Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Morrison, Lowry, A. Van, and Chairman Whaley have voted no. We have four eyes and eight noes.
Okay, item 29 fails. Item number 30.
Item 30 comes from the Hospitals and Health Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item 30 is an ordinance, first reading ordinance to amend the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Article 2, to revise and clarify the rate-making authority of the Shelby County Groundwater Quality Control Board to update permit fees required to operate, maintain, or inspect water wells and septic systems. Sponsored by Commissioner Ms. Clay Bibbs.
All right, item 30 is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Clay Bibbs, can we have a committee report?
This came down with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. We're on first reading here. Okay, thank you. We're on first reading here. We have one appearance card from Glenda Hicks. If you'll come on down, just give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes on this item.
Good afternoon, Glenda Hicks, 608 Gillies, co-chair, co-founder of 21st Century Mumpus or Bus. I've attended some of the groundwater board meetings and certainly have been educated to understand that the board has not totally operated in the capacity that it should. So I am certainly asking that you all would approve that they have the authority to certainly increase rate, permit costs. They've gone years without any updates and the amount, which is, I understand, an annual amount, in no way compensates what it should. Because we have wells, individuals who are operating with private wells, who get an assessment of a permit fee, and then they have access to God knows how much water. And we know how precious our water is, so we need some equal establishing of water usage across the board as far as Shelby County is concerned. So it is important that this ratemaking authority, the groundwater board, has the authority to do their job. Because again, they have been somewhat silent for some years. And I understand that they're probably under some restructuring, which is absolutely needed in terms of the responsibility, the crucial responsibility that they have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Sugarman?
Yes, I just, thank you, Chair. I have a few questions for the last speaker, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the microphone. I have a few questions. Okay, and so the rate increase that you're speaking of, what would that rate look like, number one? If you don't have that information, please get that. And also, I'm concerned about the aquifers. I know that there is a study by the University of Memphis concerning the aquifers, and there are some actual spots where there's some concerns. And I was just wondering if those have been addressed, and if not, why not? And what would the cost be to make sure that they're secure or do not compromise our water supply?
Well, again, I'm not the expert, first of all. I've attended a couple of meetings, and I think Protect Our Aquifer could shed more light on the situation for you. But I know that the oversight that's needed in terms of protecting our aquifer has gone lax for some time. And this, this ability to increase the fee is just one aspect of funding that's crucial to improving or protecting the aquifer. Again, to go out somewhere and just get a permit and dig a well and then have access to as much water as you want, when those of us in the city have metering costs that we're paying per CCF of water usage. And someone with a private well just can use however much they desire. So yes, we certainly need more control. And I'm trusting that with the changes that are coming about with the groundwater board, that there will be more ordinances established to have better control over those private wells.
Thank you. And so I appreciate the fact that you attend these board meetings. I have not attended any of them, having said that I have attended Protect My Aquifers, when they have community outreach meetings. And I was wondering, at the last board meeting, they mention anything about their concern with XAI? And I was wondering if that came up at all, or they're just concerned about the wells, or what was the conversation of the board when you attended?
To my knowledge, that was not the focus in terms of the groundwater board meeting.
Okay, just the wells. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you to Commissioner Sugarman through the chair. We have an item that's coming up. I know we're on the first reading of this. Because of what was just stated, do you think there's anything that we may need to add to another item that does have to do with the company that's responsible for our water? It's basically item 40. I know we're on item 30, but it's because of some information that we've gotten. Do you believe there's anything else on the status update concerning this that we may need to add or ask right here for the preparation of adding, or do you think we're fine?
Chair, may I respond? Okay. To Commissioner Ford through the chair, and so let me look at that, but I do know that I am working ordinance as well as some other individuals that are here today, as well as organizations. So I will go back and look at it and determine if we do need to amend that as well. But again, there's some ordinances that will be coming forth in the next committee meeting, and I hope that everybody's here, but let's, thank you.
Okay, and since 40 is specifically regarding the turbines, I believe that it could be separate. If you're going to bring some other legislation, we'll just keep it as is because it is good legislation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ford. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 30. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Ford, Bradford, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioners Mills, Wright, and Morrison have abstained, have eight ayes and three abstained.
Okay, item 30 goes to a second reading. Item number 31.
Item 31 is an ordinance on third reading, so once it's properly before us, I ask that you allow me to read a summary. Item 31 comes from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item 31, ordinance third reading and ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 14 through 30 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances to establish pay parity between the Shelby County Division of Corrections, SCDC Correctional Officers, and the Shelby County Sheriff's Office, SCSO Corrections Deputies. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. This item was substituted in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
Item 31 is moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Sugarman, can we have a committee report?
This item also was deferred.
Okay, it looks like it may have substituted, been substituted in committee.
The substitute was, went down with favorable recommendation.
Okay, all right, favorable recommendation, very good. All right, seeing no one in the queue on this item, I think we can, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 31. Oh, I'm sorry, read the summary first. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. The summary for this item is as follows. The Shelby County Board of Commissioners proposes to amend Chapter 14, Section 14 through 30 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances to establish pay parity between the Division of Corrections Correctional Officers and the Sheriff's Office's Corrections Deputies to ensure fair and competitive compensation for the Division of Corrections Care and Custody Staff. The amendment to the Code of Ordinances is being made in an effort to maintain retention and recruitment competitiveness within the corrections industry, particularly in light of recent pay increases by the state of Tennessee for similar corrections flux functions. This ordinance requires a simple majority vote of the Board of Commissioners for adoption.
All right, now that it's properly before us, Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Very quickly, and hopefully this gets done ASAP. And I'll say just like how I know a particular person on the city council said when people didn't want to keep him as a public works person. I'm gonna say the same thing with corrections officers, and I see y'all in the back. As I've said multiple times, nobody wants your job. You tell me right now who wants to be a corrections officer tomorrow, let me know, raise your hand right now. Besides the ones that are working there right now. Uh-huh. I think I've said enough, Chair. I'm ready to roll.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 31. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. We have 13 ayes.
All right, item 31 passes. Item 32?
Item 32 comes from the Land Use Planning Transportation Code Enforcement Committee with Commissioner Bradford as vice chair. Item 32 is an ordinance second reading, ordinance amending the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code as adopted by Shelby County on August 9, 2010, to approve a zoning district change pursuant to Chapter 9.5 for property in unincorporated Shelby County located at 10827 U.S. Highway 64, being case number Z2024-011CO. Sponsored by Commissioner Shante Avent.
All right, item 32, we can have a mover and seconder, moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Bradford stepped out, but if we can have a committee report, Commissioner Mills, did you work in that committee?
This item comes to us with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no one on the screen on this item, it's on second reading, I think we can prepare the screen to vote. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Thornton, Morrison, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioners Wright and Brooks have abstained. We have eight ayes and two abstained.
Okay, item 32 will go to a third reading. Item number 33.
Item 33 is also an ordinance on third reading, so once it's properly before us, I ask that I be permitted to read the summary to the record. Item 33 comes from the General Government Committee with Commissioner Mills as vice chair. Item 33 is ordinance third reading, ordinance amending the Shelby County Charter to amend one, Article 5, Section 5.08, Conflicts of Interest, two, Article 5, Section 5.24, Recall of Elected County Officers, and three, Article 6, Section 6.02, County Board of Education. Sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley. This item was sent down without recommendation in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
All right, item 33 is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton, Commissioner Mills. Can we have a committee report?
Yes, this came without a recommendation.
Okay, so Madam Parliamentarian, I've got a substitute to offer that is different than this, so if it's appropriate, I can introduce that. And we would need to suspend the rules if we'd like to make this the third reading and then read the summary.
Can legal tell me if the summary that was provided to me is much different than what is being substituted, the item?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, the summary will be in line with the substitute.
Okay, all right, so Commissioners, I'm moving a substitute. The difference here is that, as you're aware, the state legislature concluded its session and did not pass legislation as it related to the recall of school board members. However, they passed different legislation, which will be, which I will be bringing for consideration at our next meeting. But what this does is it removes that component from the ballot initiative that would amend the charter, given that it would require state approval. That state approval did not happen. So at this time, rather than approve something that was not allowed by the state, we would focus just on the amendment to the charter that deals with conflicts of interest. Okay, that's, that's the substitute. If there's a second. Okay, second of a vice chair, Avent. Is there any objection to that? Okay, so that substitute will be properly before us. Madam Parliamentarian, can you read the summary on the substituted ordinance?
Summary is as follows. Ordinance amending the Shelby County Ethics Ordinance Code, Section 18 through 51, to include the definition of emolment, to include the term chief before references to the ethics officer without, within the ordinance, to remove portions of Section 18 through 55, four, regarding full-time employment positions by commissioners that have occasional contact with the county to reduce the Ethics Commissioners Board members from 12 members and a chair to six members, and a chair for a total commission of seven members, to remove the word direct in Section 18 through 57, and to specify that ethics forums will be kept on file in the county attorney's department. These changes are made in an effort to allow for a more consistent interpretation of the ordinance and to better facilitate ethics commissions meeting to achieve a quorum. This particular...
Sorry, sorry, Madam Parliamentarian, I just, that is the incorrect summary. That's for a different item.
Okay.
So this is, this is the substitute. Can we, Attorney Smith, would it be appropriate for us to read the proposed amendment that is being put forward as a summary?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, yes, you can read the caption, but I've also just forwarded to the parliamentarian the summary for the charter item, which is what we're on now.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Is it the one that says, this, Megan?
Yeah.
It's the one titled Charter, okay, okay. Is this one? And then the one that I just read, is that for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Apologies, I read my summaries out of order. Okay, so the summary for the substitute ordinance for this item 33 is as follows. This ordinance amends the following Shelby County Charter, Sections 1, Article 5, Section 5.08, Conflicts of Interest. In sum, Section 5.08 is being amended to align with the state ethical standards and to clarify ethical duties and obligations of both county-elected officials and employees. Shelby County Board of Commissioners has proposed amendments to the Shelby County Charter as recited herein, and the same should be published and submitted to the voters of Shelby County in accordance with the state election laws during the next countywide election occurring in spring of 2026, i.e. the next regular primary election occurring in 2026. This summary is provided with reference to Article 2, Section 2.06(c) of the Shelby County Charter. And again, this item requires at least nine votes to pass.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'm also going to make a motion to suspend the rules to make this the final reading. Okay, seconded by Commissioner Ford, if we can do that without objection. All right, thanks so much. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And so a couple of questions real quickly, and this is to the parliamentarians through the chair. So since this is a charter change, does it have to be approved by the state? Once we make a charter change, does, oh...
That would be a legal inquiry.
Okay, thank you. And so this is to attorney through the chair. Since this is a charter change, does it then have to be approved by the state, is my question?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, no, this will go to voter referendum in the next countywide general election.
Okay, thank you. And so then it'll go into effect when again?
After the voter referendum next spring.
Okay, thank you. And next, last question. And so how would this impact the current school boards, or anybody in general, rather? So once it's voted on by the, why are you getting confused? Because I'm kind of confused, okay? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it. I do support it. So once it goes into effect... it. I do support it. So, once it goes into effect, okay, are you saying that the voters have to vote on it or not? Once we approve it, that's done, correct? Or is there another step?
Once it's, if it's approved today.
Correct.
It will appear on the ballot for the voters.
Correct.
Of the next countywide general election.
Correct.
And it will apply where the charter itself applies.
Okay, that's what I was getting to. Okay, so again, once we approve it, then the final say-so will be up to the voters. And so the voters will now have the final say-so as far as the elected officials. And so I just want to make it very clear to the public because I'm having people coming back to me and saying, what is the Commission doing? Well, the Commission is now giving the opportunity for voters to vote on it. And so please vote on this because since I've been here for the past three years, I've had people come to me and say, we need a recall, we need a recall. Well, now you get an opportunity to vote on a recall if that's what you all want. Thank you. No?
Sorry.
No, that's not it?
Just, Commissioner Sugarman, if I may, just reset kind of...
Because, yes, thank you.
Yep, yep. So the substitute here strikes any of the language around the school board because it was only applicable if the state had enabled it. The state did not enable it. Now, there's something else the state enabled that we'll talk about separately, but in this case, all we're keeping is the amendment to the charter that aligns conflict of interest with state law. Does not address the school board because that, no, or recalls, no. Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, like my colleague who just spoke, I've also been supporting this in part because of that, extending that recall to cover the school board members. So are we saying, I guess this would be to the county attorney again, are we saying the state is precluding us from making this, causing this referendum to take place with regard to the school board?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, I would say that the state did not authorize the county to have that ability. So there is no recall authority in state law for the charter to enact.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, I would just simply state, you know, we pay attention to what our state legislature and what our state leaders are saying, and when they say that they're waiting on us to bring a local solution, but they don't provide us the tools with which to, you know, enact that solution, that's very frustrating. Because we have constituents that are asking us daily to do something about the state of our schools, and we just simply don't have a lot of tools. Now, I do appreciate there were things that were passed, and you've made reference to those. I'm excited about the audit and hope, I think I'm understanding what you're going to be bringing later, I hope. But again, just wanted to express that bit of frustration that we could have at least given the voters an option to say, we want this, we want a hook, so to speak, on the people we're electing through the school board. The other thing I wanted to mention was, and this was just brought up in discussion, I think I heard the county attorney state that this charter referendum would take place in the next general election, but the ordinance here speaks to spring of twenty-six and the next regular, regular primary election. So which, am I misreading something, or when is this actually taking place?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, it would be at the next countywide general election, which will be in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six. I don't know the exact date, but it will be at the very next.
So the, just to clarify, to Commissioner Wright's point, the election in May is a primary election, the general election is in August of two thousand and twenty-six.
And it also, it also states next regular primary election, so do we need to, I would make a motion to clean that language up to say next regular general election.
Okay, that, okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Wright to clarify that the ballot initiative would go on the next county general election, which is in August of two thousand and twenty-six. That was seconded by Commissioner Bradford.
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Mills?
State, are they talking state primaries? Because those are in August, and the county primaries are in May. So is it maybe referencing the state primaries?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, to the best of my knowledge, it will be at the countywide in May, that, that primary election. That is a countywide election, and that's what the charter calls for, for a voter referendum.
Okay, now, my understanding is that it can be on any, it could be on August if we wanted it to. Is it up to us to decide if we can put it on the May ballot or the August ballot?
Megan Smith, let me take a look at it just to be sure. Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, if you choose to put it on the August ballot, you can do that as well.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Wright, so you made the motion to put it in August. We're hearing it could be in May as well, so...
Mr. Chair, yeah, I would withdraw. If you're happy with this existing in May, I'm happy.
Yeah, great, we'll keep it in May. Okay, so the motion was made to suspend the rules to keep this as our third and final reading. That was done without objection. We do have one comment card here before we vote on this item, but I'd like to call up Leslie Rollinson. Leslie Rollinson, if you might, come on down, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Yeah. Good afternoon, my name is Leslie Rollinson. I live at forty sixty-nine Philwood Avenue, three eight one two two. The concerns that we're bringing forward today really are more of a direct impact to Commissioner Ford because of his stance that he has made against Elon Musk.
So the item we're dealing with here is around a change of the charter around conflicts of interest?
Conflict of interest, this is about ethics, the ethics ordinance and the, oh, okay, so this is for the next one. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry for the miscommunication.
All right, just want to remind the audience around decorum, make sure that if we're happy about something, we can raise a thumbs up. That is super helpful, thank you. All right, so seeing no one else in the queue, we can take item thirty-three to a vote as amended. He withdrew the amendment, yep. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Waley. We have thirteen eye votes.
Item thirty-three passes. Item number thirty-four.
Item thirty-four is an ordinance on third reading. Once it's properly before us, I ask that I be permitted to read the summary into the record. Item thirty-four comes from General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item thirty-four, ordinance third reading, ordinance to amend the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, chapter eighteen, article two, code of ethics, to ensure county ethical provisions are applied consistently and more closely aligned with the charter and state law. Sponsored by Chairman Michael Waley. This item was sent down with an unfavorable recommendation in April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five committee meeting.
All right, item thirty-four is moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Brooks, can we have a committee report?
Yes, this item was sent down with an unfavorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, I passed out a substitute here that apparently is missing a page, so we can try to get that corrected. I'm going to make a motion to bifurcate this item. So in other words, there are two major, there are really two major sections of this ordinance. One is defining the word emolument, just adding legal definitions that align more with state law that goes with the prior item that we just passed. And then the remaining portion of it deals with the ethics commission and other ethic procedures that I'd like to then refer back to committee. So I'd like to try to address one part of this ordinance today and then refer the other part for additional discussion. So what you have in front of you is the bifurcation of that first part, so defining the word emolument, which again aligns with the ballot initiative that we just passed. So it pulls that out of the current read, or the current language that's in the system. We're missing the... So I'm going to move that.
Chairman, we don't have it on this side.
Right, Chair, Avant?
Chairman, would you be willing to move this to the Hill so we could take care of other business while they bring that substitute?
Why don't we, we, I don't know about moving it to the Hill, but we can...
I think we can just, can we hold it and then bring up the next item?
Okay, we're going to hold this until we can get that clarified, and then we'll come back to it when we do have the proper substitute. Madam Parliamentarian, please call up item thirty-five.
Item thirty-five is an ordinance on third reading. It's less than two pages, so I will read the entire ordinance into the record once it's properly before us. Item thirty-five comes from General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item thirty-five, ordinance third reading, ordinance approving and setting the salary of the Shelby County Sheriff for the two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and twenty-thirty term of office, sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford, Jr.
All right, item thirty-five is moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Brooks, can we have a committee report?
This item came down with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
Chair, I've said everything I need to say, so unless Commissioners have questions on how we got to this number, this is something that was endorsed by the Sheriff Deputy Union, and this also keeps it in line to where we can only do this every four years. So upon this passing with nine votes, we can come back and revisit at the end of the calendar year what the new mayor's salary would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk, please, I'm sorry, read the summary, I'm sorry.
Since this one is less than two pages and it's, I'm required to read it in its entirety. Whereas Article eight, section eight point eleven of the Shelby County Charter requires that the compensation of all county charter officers shall be based upon Tennessee Code annotated section eight dash twenty-four dash one oh two, and the county commissioners are authorized to change same from time to time by ordinance. And whereas, the current annual salary of the Shelby County Sheriff is one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, section eight point eleven of the Shelby County Charter authorizes the commission to change the compensation of any county charter officer from time to time by ordinance. And whereas, it is the desire of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to set the salary of the Shelby County Sheriff for the two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and thirty term of office, which shall begin on September first, two thousand and twenty-six, now therefore be ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County Tennessee, that the salary of the Sheriff of Shelby County Tennessee for the term of office beginning September one, two thousand and twenty-six be and is hereby approved and set at, I think I'm reading the version that had the blank in it, is this one, the one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred? Okay, let me make sure I'm reading the one that is, alrighty, give me one moment. Okay, this is the second one. Set at two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars annually, be it further ordained, that if any clause, section, paragraph, sentence, or part of this ordinance shall be held or declared to be unconstitutional void, it shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance, it being hereby declared to be the legislative intent of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to have passed the remainder of this ordinance, notwithstanding the parts so held unconstitutional void, if any. Be it further ordained, that this ordinance shall be adopted upon receiving a two-thirds vote of the membership of the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Article two, section two point oh six, C three E of the Charter of Shelby County. Be it further ordained, that this ordinance shall become effective fifteen days after the date of its passage in accordance with the Shelby County Charter, Article two, section two point oh sixty-four, the public welfare requiring same.
Okay, thank you for reading the summary, and thank you, Commissioner Ford. I think we're ready to vote. Item thirty-five, please prepare the screen to vote. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avant, and Chairman Waley. We have thirteen eye votes.
Item thirty-five passes. Item thirty-six.
Item thirty-six comes from the Core City Neighborhoods and Housing Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item thirty-six is an ordinance, first reading, joint ordinance of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners and Memphis City Council, establishing the Memphis Shelby County Building Home Program pursuant to the Tennessee Homestead Act within chapter two eighty-one of the Public Acts of nineteen eighty-five. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman, Commissioner Brittany Thornton, Commissioner Mikel Lowry, and Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Okay, item thirty-six is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Brooks, can we have a committee report?
This item came down with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. We have an appearance card on this item, Gilbert Barnes Carter the third. All right, good afternoon, come on down, just restate your name on the record, address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Gilbert Barnes Carter the third, thirty-seven West Waldorf Avenue, three eight one zero nine. I only have one question with regard to this agenda item. Will residents have the opportunity to earn homesteading tax credits, if I'm understanding the language of it correctly? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that wish to respond to that?
Commissioner Brooks? Chairman, I think we need to find out if, here's Mr. Zina.
Okay, Director Zina?
And his manager.
Thank you, John Zina, Planning and Development. The answer to that question is no. Those, that term, homestead, is used in two different ways in the state law. In this case, it refers to just simply an alternative means of disposing of surplus public property, but it would not be eligible for that tax credit.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Bradford?
Yes, thank you. Director Zina, my friends at Habitat for Humanity are very interested in this item, so I may point them in your direction or just establish a meeting so they can understand this item a little bit better. So just giving you a heads up.
Certainly, be happy to do that.
All right, all right, thank you all. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item thirty-six, first reading. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ford?
Well, it's more of a comment. I don't remember if you were in committee or not, but I did ask NARAB and the Black Coalition of Housing what their thoughts were on this, and I know at least one other Commissioner asked if they could put what they've put in place for the purposes of making sure that this ordinance is cognizant of those that are actually doing that work as well. So around second reading, I'll be asking if they could give their questions, comments, or concerns, but if they don't have any, I'm asking for them to give correspondence of support for this particular ordinance before I add any type of co-sponsorship to this. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I think, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item thirty-six, it's the first reading.
Chair, again, I can't vote, so of course I'm going to say yes.
I'm sorry.
I don't know what's going on.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioners Wright and Morrison have abstained, have 11 eyes and one abstained.
Okay, item 36 goes to a second reading, item 37.
Item 37 comes from the General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 37 is a resolution requiring the chief administrator of the Board of Shelby County Commissioners provide monthly line item financial reports to the Board of County, of Shelby County Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. The citation was deferred in April 14th, 2025, commission meeting.
All right, item 37 is moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Ford. This item was deferred at our last commission meeting.
And Chair, I'd like to speak.
Okay, Commissioner, yep, Commissioner Sugarman.
I don't know what's going on with my system. Thank you, Chair. And so I just wanna say real quickly, is the fact that I just want the public to know, as a county commissioner, we cannot see our monthly budget on a regular basis. I have done foias, you know, Freedom of Information Act, I have requested in writing several times, but we need to know, what is our money being spent for as a commission? You know, what is the balance on a regular basis? What's the unused? What's the allocated? You know, things of that nature. And as a commission, you ought to hold us responsible, and you don't wanna hear, well, nobody gave us the records, nobody gave us financial statements. And in fact, I'm gonna share with my colleagues what the director of finance said, and it's ridiculous. It doesn't have the beginning balance, it doesn't have what we've used or allocated, the unspent. We don't, I don't even know if over the three years that I've been here, if our budget has increased, and if so, by how much. And again, we wanna hold ourselves accountable, we ought to be transparent with the public, and at any point in time, either, any of us should be able to tell you, this money's going for this, and this house was used, et cetera, et cetera. But without line item documentation, we don't have that. And so I'm urging my colleagues that we need a line item budget for the commission, and it needs to be sent to all of the commissioners on a regular basis. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman, Commissioner Ford?
Chair, very quickly, and I'm, I'm actually talking to you, Chair, so I don't want this resolution to appear as if it is a slight to you being the chair for the next few months and the term that you have had, because this has nothing to do with you personally, this has to do with a process that the money cop, AKA the comptroller of the treasury, has stated in a letter stating that he is requiring all of Shelby County government to have line items. It was page two of his letter stating that if we did not get our house in order, that we would not get our entire budget passed. And with a lot of the CIP that we have and whatnot, we wouldn't be able to do any resolutions regarding debt. And I just wanna make sure that if we are going to ask all of county government, especially those in one division, to provide it in order, we have to do the same thing in our office. That's all I see this resolution doing, so we're only doing what is being required, especially when June 30th comes around, and we have to do it anyway. Because what I don't think anybody wants is another letter saying, nope, you still didn't follow directions and now your budget will not be approved. I think it'll be approved because it's been said a lot, and I think that the deputy budget director has been talking to the comptroller and everything, but if they're asking us to do it, we as a body of 13, and you the chair and the chief administrator, we can go ahead and do this, because it's already required. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ford, and thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 37. Okay, I think we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. We have 13 eye votes.
All right, item 37 passes. I think we can, Commissioners, let's go back to 34. You should have the, the proposed substitute in front of you. So item 34 was moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. You have a copy of, of the substitute to the amendment, or the motion I'm making is to bifurcate this item, to pull out the legal definitions that are at the beginning of the ordinance. So that's all that's contained within this. This is what matches up with the ballot referendum question that we just passed in item 33. Is there a second to that? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Caswell, can we do that without objection? All right, hearing none, so we'll now have before us item 34A. Okay, 34A. Commissioner Sugarman, you're in the queue. Okay, let's read, okay, read, read the caption for 34A.
The substitute ordinance reads, whereas pursuant to state law, the Shelby County Board of Commissioners adopted ordinance number 330 on June 24, 2007, establishing a code of ethics regulating the conduct of Shelby County officials, employees, and appointees as codified in Chapter 18 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners has granted the express authority under the Shelby County Home Rule Charter to enact ordinances to guard against injustices and to supplement the provisions and extend prohibitions in the county's charter against conflicts of interest not inconsistent therewith. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners deems it in the best interests of the citizens of Shelby County and the officers and employees of the county government, that Chapter 18, Section 2 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances be amended to add important definitions for interpretation of county ethical standards. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners finds that the definition of enolment proposed herein provides more clarity for the application of county ethical standards. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, that this ordinance amending Shelby County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Article 2, Section 18 through 51, to add the definition below is hereby approved. Enolment is broadly construed in means any kind of profit, benefit, gratuity, advantage, bonus, or gain obtained due to a person's office appointment or employment with the county that was not paid by the county. Enolment excludes those funds paid in the form of a fixed and annualized salary paid by an outside employer not due to any, any county employment, appointment, or office. Be it further ordained that if any clause, section, paragraph, sentence, or part of this ordinance shall be held or declared to be unconstitutional void, it shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance, it being hereby declared to be the legislative intent of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to have passed the remainder of this ordinance notwithstanding the parts so held unconstitutional void, if any. Be it further ordained that after receiving a simple majority vote of the membership of the Board of Commissioners on third reading, this ordinance shall become effective in accordance Article 2, Section 2.06(c) of the Shelby County Charter, the general welfare of the public requiring same.
Okay, thank you for reading the summary, so I'm also gonna move...
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, my parliamentary inquiry is as follows, because I heard you say a couple of things on how you're trying to do something. So this third, since you have asked for this to be divided to where we're talking about an emoluments definition in contrast to the rest of the ordinance, parliamentarily, are you also asking for this part to be disposed of, or would this, since there's a lot of substantive changes, actually go back to a fourth reading for the purposes of this entire exercise? The reason why I'm asking is because if it's gonna go back to a fourth reading anyway, and it's your desire to take another portion back to committee, I just sincerely hope that for the 34B part, you allow the people that had a card to be able to speak. So is it your desire, parliamentarily, to bring this first part in front of us, have a vote to where it's gonna go back to a committee anyway, and then we discuss the second part later where there are cards?
Um, so the, the intent is to take 34A, which is what we just broke out, the one piece, suspend the rule so that we can just adopt that or vote on it today, and then on 34B, which is the remainder, to, well, take the comment cards first, actually, before any of that, and then on 34B, it would be to refer that to committee, so take no action on it today other than to refer it to committee.
So, so when are you gonna take the cards after 34A? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I was gonna take them right now, just after we, since we suspended the rule on, on 34A.
Okay, and nobody's made that motion yet, right? Okay, I'll let somebody else do it, because I have a parliamentary inquiry, I don't wanna do more.
All right, well, okay, I'll make the motion to suspend the rule to have this 34A be the third reading. Your second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Morrison, can we do that without objection? All right, hearing none, 34A is what's before us. So for those that are listening, what we've done is, is bifurcated item 34 to address the component of the ordinance that deals specifically with the charter ballot question that we just passed in item 33. And then we'll have a 34B, which is the remainder of the ordinance. My intent is to make a motion to refer that back to committee, but regardless, we're gonna hear any comment we have on, on item 34. Okay, so first up, if I call your name, come forward, bring back up Leslie Rollinson. This is the item you'd like to speak on. You can just, again, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Rollinson. I live at 4069 Philwood Avenue, 38122. And basically, what I'm here to speak about is about the changes that the Shelby County Mayor Lee Harris wants to make to the ethics ordinance, which we believe is because of Commissioner Ford's stance on holding Elon Musk and XAI accountable for the pollution, the environmental racism that they're projecting in our community, and the right to breathe clean air. So one of the first things that he's wanting to do with this ethics ordinance is he's wanting to change the number of people on the ethics commission from 13 to seven. This means that you, you could have a quorum of four people. That means you only have to have three out of four people make recommendations, and then you're talking censure, you know, ouster, I mean, serious, serious implications for what just a few people would have, the kind of power that would allow these people to have. One of his main reasons is he's wanting to remove Commissioner Ford from his only chairmanship, which is that deals with the racial equity via resolution commission. And that's something that we don't want to see happen. Okay, so, once he makes these 13 to seven changes, he's gonna have, be able to, at the next available meeting, he's gonna be able to handpick all of the members that belong to the ethics commission. And that would then, of course, have to be approved by the county commission, but he's still getting to handpick it. And that's not the way you want your ethics commission to be picked. Okay, um, he would, he's also going to ask new members to investigate Commissioner Ford and recommend immediate ouster from the Shelby County Board of Commissioners. This ethics commission has a 40-year-old allegation regarding Ford on their website, which none of the allegations ever had a formal ethics complaint attached to them regarding Commissioner Ford. So they would be able to vote whether or not to remove him, and then could replace him immediately with whoever they want. So here's some facts, and the first is the most alarming. The first, the current ethics officer is also the contracts administrator. That, I mean, that's really, oh, you gotta say, because that's extremely serious conflicts of interest. I worked 22 years at the University of Tennessee Health Science Center doing clinical research, and...
All right, thank, thank you so much. Unfortunately, we'll have to leave it there, but thank you for sticking around for, for item 34. And just again, a reminder to the audience, thumbs up would be much appreciated. Next up, we have Sarah Carpenter. Sarah Carpenter, I saw her earlier. Yeah, come on, come on down, Sarah Carpenter. Well, we'll, we'll find out here in a second. Come, come on down and state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Carpenter, 1637 Britton Street. About each one of y'all something, that y'all may not know about, that's going on in this city. There's a school that's been demolished, and so every school that get closed down in our community, in the black community, people in the community not doing this. They blaming on crack users, they blaming on anybody in the community. But guess what? The people that's doing drugs in our community, they don't got tools to steal brand-new wonders out of buildings. Y'all need to check yourselves before y'all wreck yourselves, because our communities are wrecked, and guess what? Our kids are dying every day. I got a school right around the corner from me. It, it wouldn't have been boarded up if it wasn't for Athiya Green and Dr. Fagan. I give people their props where it's due. I want each one of y'all to have this. I visited this school before, and it was beautiful, Florida Canyon. And guess what? They blaming on crack users. People don't even smoke crack no more. They using business now. They blaming on everybody, but the people...
All right, Ms., Ms., Ms. Carpenter, would you mind just, on the microphone?
I'm gonna give all these.
Okay, okay.
They blaming on everybody, everybody, but who might be doing it? Miska, I want you to see that. Shante, I want you to see that. Charlie Caswell, I want you to see that. That, that ain't the only building that's been demolished. That's not the only building. Why is Shelby County even handling real estate? Come on, y'all. Come on. It don't take a rocket science, or you don't even need a college degree to figure this out. You don't even need a high school degree to figure this out. All y'all gotta do is figure it out. Y'all the ones supposed to figure it out for us, right? Right? Help me out. Or help us figure it out. We trying to help y'all figure it out. I'm not gonna let this rest microwave, because too many schools, Grizzly Prep wanted that school. And guess what? They a good charter school. Tim, we're doing the work. And guess what? If Tim were one doing the work, I wouldn't be standing here, because I want charter schools to close too if they ain't doing right. Y'all, come on, it's 13 people up here. We got, how many board members? We shouldn't have any at this point, but we still got. But we got, we got school board members, we got people running for mayor. Y'all don't have to be running for nothing to do something to help a community. I'm talking to you, and I'm talking to him, because I ain't running for nothing, never will. I went there, because absolute power corrupts absolutely in this city. I'm done. I'm telling y'all, I'm going everywhere, I'm gonna go live at these schools to let everybody in this city know. School boards shouldn't be having to deal with real estate. That building was beautiful when Florida, when, when scholars was there. I went in that building. Shannon, somebody could have walked right in Shannon Elementary, used that building. Somebody could have walked in where? Hues. Y'all, they, they destroying humans now, Charlie. When Barbara White walked out, somebody could have walked right in there. I don't care what kind of school it is, as long as they educating kids and teaching kids how to read microwave. You know what I'm talking about.
Thank you so much, no, no, I, I appreciate all that. Uh, thank you.
I ain't do, y'all, I want y'all to know. If I have to bring the whole city, because I'm going live, everybody's up.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Sarah Carpenter.
Chairman?
All right, Commissioner Thornton?
Just a point of personal privilege, I just wanna corroborate what she's saying, because it's impacting District 10 as well. I just did a tour of Magnolia Elementary, and you could literally swap out the same photos for that school. It's currently open, many different entry points to being able to decimate the building, and I was told... And I was told that it had been recently renovated. So when we think about how cost-effective it is for us to renovate schools, let them sit there without any type of oversight, and then become severely damaged, wholeheartedly, Magnolia is saying the same thing. These aren't neighborhood people who did this. These are people who are outside of the community with no oversight.
All right.
So I really do hope that during the budget season, that we talk about these real estate issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. And Commissioners, as you know, we expect to hear from the school district next week. These are all really important questions to make sure that we're asking and figuring out ways to hold them accountable to these very things that we're hearing today. All right, next up, we have on item thirty-four Bishop Charles Lampkin. Come on down, state your name and address, you know, three minutes. All right, sir, good afternoon. State your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Bishop Charles Lampkin. Thirty-seven-eleven Austin P. Highway. I stand before you today for two reasons. One, we're talking about ethics. We're talking about ethical behavior. This ordinance right here looks to me like, just looks to me and us, and our community, like Fagin's two-point-oh. Do you really want to be viewed like that? This is a rush to judgment. I was always taught, you're innocent, and to prove it guilty. Well, none of us, a lot of us have things in our closet that we don't want to expose, every one of us. Why in the world would we be rushing to extricate someone, get them out, and put a handpicked crew in there? You want to turn, you want to change it from thirteen to seven? That's just like that six, that mob of six that ran the Memphis Shelby County School Board upside down. Now, again, we are at the crossroads of policy. We're at the crossroads of integrity. We're at the crossroads of demonstrating to these folk that voted you into office to demonstrate some integrity. Integrity. Why are we rushing, laying on the gas to remove people, yank them? If they're guilty, fine. The law and the law will lay it down and deal with them accordingly. But guess what? How can you lay on your pillow and watch school board members twerk online? And this, you want to appoint five of your henchmen? I didn't say you, but they want to have five appointed, so that we can control the narrative. The narrative is this: It's wrong yesterday, today, and it's still wrong right now. So, again, since we at the crossroads, look up, wake up, pay attention, because we are watching, the community is watching you. We're watching how you act, how you demonstrate what this call to judgment is gonna be. So why do you leave Memphis Shelby County School Board in charge of, in charge of real estate, and look at what they've done? Millions of dollars poured in to educate our children. Maybe some of the charter schools didn't do what they were supposed to do, so you got rid of them. But now, what did you do with the bill? Now, do we have to throw either more money in there, or just leave that blighted material, those blighted buildings in our neighborhoods? Well, guess what? That's not right. Not only is it in black and brown neighborhoods, we have marginalized families. Fine, they've cut a whole bunch of things out of the budget from the top, we're gonna say Trump, no. How about this? Let's get on our business, let's be about God's business, and let's operate with duplicity and integrity. Integrity, because we are watching you, and I promise you, every step of the way.
Thank you so much.
We will hold you accountable. Thank you, Mr. Welly. I appreciate you.
Yes, sure. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Myrna Ford. Come on down. All right, good afternoon, Ms. Ford. If you'll just state your name and address, you know, three minutes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Myrna Owen Ford, nine-seventeen Somerset Lane. Trust in the Lord with all thy heart, and lean not to thy own understanding. Acknowledge Him, and always, yes, always, and He shall direct our path. I'm coming to you first as a woman of God, who I fear, who sits high, and He sees low everybody here, including me. He knows about meetings, He knows about everything that we do, and we have to be accountable to Him, not man, but to Him. I'm here also on behalf of my son, and everybody knows that's my son. And his dad and I have been here to support him one hundred percent since this item has come here. So I'm coming on behalf as a mother also. My son is an elected official. They elected him, and he had over seventy-five percent of his constituents to vote for him. My husband is an elected official, and he got also seventy-something percent of constituents. So guess what? They have a good constituent following. And we have been on the phone asking people to watch this meeting today, and to listen to this meeting today, so that everybody here will be accountable. Now, I've been sitting here on this thirty-four, got confused from thirty-four to thirty, for thirty-three, thirty-four for a minute, and I know who the author confusion is, and those Bible readers know who the author confusion is. I have sit here and watched Commissioner Thornton ask questions, ask questions about this. She's asked them over here questions. They were in the, what, the, that person, that man who's on, we'll go around in circles? That's the questions, those are answers that she got. Sugar Man, she asked questions. They said they get back with her. They still ghost on you, am I correct? All the questions you asked about this ordinance, they got ghost on you. And Commissioner Mills, I call her my shero. You know why I called her my shero? Because she called you all and told you all that it was personal, and it's between the mayor and my son. That's what this is about, the mayor and my son. And then I ask, why are they afraid? Well, he might get revengeful. I'm only repeating what I have heard, okay? So I'm just asking you all to reconsider this. And, and, and then, as far as fear, there's also, in the Bible, because you don't be fearful of somebody to be revengeful, because the word says, "For God has not given us the spirit of fear." You all have the power, the love, and a sound mind to do what is right. And I, and my time is up, but I want to wish all mothers up here happy Mother's Day, and I want to wish Commissioner Bradford a happy birthday. Thank you all so much for listening, and be blessed. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you so much, Ms. Ford, for being here. Next up, we have Edmund H. Ford, Senior. Come on down. You'll state your name and address again, you'll have three minutes.
Edmund Ford, Senior, nine-seventeen Somerset Lane. My wife said quite a bit, and enough, I'm not gonna be as nice as she is. Okay? Commissioner Mills, thank you, because this is a personal issue. I want you to understand and deliver a message back to the upstairs for me. You're running for mayor, and quite a few of y'all running for mayor, okay? I want y'all to understand one thing. I'm across the street, and I'm talking to y'all too, because all of y'all work for the mayor upstairs, so you're gonna do as he said. Grow up, don't have no fear, because he's just man. Like my wife said, there's someone above that will take care of all the business. Chair, I'm hoping what you were trying to do, splitting it up and taking it back to committee, what you really kind of need to do, because this is for all y'all commissioners. He's picking on my son. He figure he's picking on really the Ford family. That ain't gonna happen. I don't even know where my district is, but I got seventy-six percent of the vote. They changed my district around everywhere. So I really don't know, but I represent Memphis, okay? But what you're trying to do, I hope, when you take it back to committee, y'all table it until the next commission is elected. Don't involve yourself, because what he's trying to do, he has an agenda. And if he figure he can use us, you will be next. You're talking about seven, don't take away y'all's control. Keep your control. That's the only thing that y'all have that we don't have across the street. Y'all got more control. Keep your control. Don't pay no attention to upstairs, because he's almost gone anyway. And I want to send this message. He need to come play with me. Don't play with my son. My son is a God-fearing person, okay? But you tell him to come see me. It's personal, and I'm gonna make it personal with him. And I want the media to make sure that he heard that, because I'm gonna make sure, and everybody that I got named that started all of this, I'm gonna bring it out right along with him. So when y'all say ethics, just put him as ethics. Thank y'all very much, but y'all need to, hey, God is in control.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have Gerald Green. All right, Mr. Green, thanks for being with us. Come on down, state your name and address, you know, three minutes.
Good evening, Gerald Green, four-zero-eight-seven Slumber Lane, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-two-seven. I come before the body a number of, number of times in regards to ethics. You know, I have informed you guys, I filed complaints, two complaints against the mayor. One dealing with alcohol in a county building on, on, on county time. I had pictures to substantuate that. And I filed another ethics violation against him involving a million dollars that was given to Red Rover. It was a company that the lady was a C, the lady was a CEO of the company, and she was on Lee Harris' transition team. And after that, half of the money was already spent, when it was voted down not to give her the money by the county attorneys. So when I filed the charge, they turned around and had an outside attorney to come in and, I guess, do an investigation. Now, any, any monies over fifty thousand dollars need to come before the commissions, you guys, to be voted on. And it was, they voted it down, but the county attorneys gave the woman the money anyway. And these are facts. And I just want to understand how that works. You know, I, I file a sworn complaint against the mayor regarding the alcohol in the contract involving Red Rover. And the letter I, I received from the attorney in the investigation, that there wasn't no violations. And I also had pictures of the alcohol in the one-six north main building. A whole bar was set up on county time. Clear violation of the mayor. Now, I understand, you know, we, we pass ordinance, and today, we want you to, it's, how, how it come to pass when ordinance is passed by Mayor Lee Harris? It's the right to do whatever he want to do? Does that make any sense to anybody? And what about the checks and balances? I mean, we sit here every day, taxpayers, we are taxpayers, right? You guys are supposed to be his boss, but you're not. But you're not. You afraid to make a decision? That makes you wrong too. And I mean, I sat down, and I, I went over all this, and I, I couldn't put my, wrap my mind around it, because after I got through reading and the paper that I filed, and attorney gave me a response back that wasn't no violations, it made me, I, I kind of got a, I got, I got upset for a minute, but I know what God does. He uncover everything. You can't hide it. You know, I know how sheep, you know, wool put on sheep clothing, and they walk around. It's gonna be a separation period. God says it's gonna be separated, wheat from the tar, the sheep from the goats. It's coming. I'm telling you, you take a personal attack on a person, but what's in the book? Not, don't play behind, look, play what's in the book.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Green. Appreciate you, appreciate you coming down, sharing your perspective. Next up, we have Gregory Stokes. Gregory Stokes. All right, just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Gregory Stokes, thirty-four fifty-four New Horn Lake Road, Pastor Greater Paradise, Baptist Church. I really started to stay at home and check you guys out on YouTube, but it was in my spirit to come down here to share with this body. Our city in Shelby County is in trouble. And, but behooves me that all of us say that we praying. Our children are dying in the streets. We afraid to go to the supermarket. We watching our back while we pumping gas. And we've never seen it like this before. And I joined Commissioner Caswell the other day in prayer, in pursuit of God, amen. And I think they was praying on the city side. All this prayer going on, and all this seeking the Lord, and we talking in tongues. Went to church yesterday, and some of y'all had communion. And, but our city, our county is still in trouble. Amen. It's got to be somehow between us and our God. You know what I believe it is? I believe God is upset with Shelby County and Memphis. And until we decide to do what's right, it ain't gonna change. We can throw rocks and hide our hands, depends on what's, what's on the floor. You get up, take a wider break, so you want to vote neither way, just sit and watch all of it. But there are the passages that we've been quoting here, if my people that are called by my name, but arm themselves. And I think that put all of us in there. Amen. Arm themselves and pray, do some serious soul searching, some fasting, seek His face. And, and then it said, "Turn from our wicked ways." Y'all got some wicked ways. Y'all got some wicked ways. I got, Harold, you got some wicked ways. But this ain't gonna get no better, y'all, until we turn and decide to start doing the right thing. And I think this audience, it's got a wicked spirit to it. Amen. It's got a wicked spirit to it. And you can ride with it, but you ain't gonna do nothing but keep hurting Shelby County and Memphis.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Next up, we have Sammy Hunter. Come on down. Mr. Hunter, just state your name and address, you know, three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sammy Hunter. I live at forty-two-eleven Parkchester Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-eight. I'm also a co-chairman of the Memphis Bus Rider Union. I'm one of the transit advocates that is in support of Mr. Ford. And this is what we think about this. According to reading the goals, change ethic ordinance from County Mayor Lee Harris, I think the whole deal of making new proposal changes referring to County Commissioner Ford toward ongoing investigation, which is unfair. Ford has been serving this community for years, I mean, for years. I think Mayor, Mayor wants appointments, I think the mayor wants to appoint someone to take Commissioner Ford's place, which is wrong. I think the ordinance is, is just an unnecessary change. I think all they stated is retaliation, retaliation, a form of a personal attacks against Mr. Ford. And Mr. Ford has been, like I, again, where I'm gonna say again, he has been there for us in the community and we think that this is wrong. And, and I, and I'm not, we're the transit advocates, we are not going for this and we are not gonna stand by and let this happen. We want you all to do right, make the right decision because this is man livelihood is at jeopardy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you very much. Next is Notoria Carpenter. Okay, always good to see you. Notoria Carpenter, state your name and address, you know, three minutes.
Notoria Carpenter, 1637 Britton, Memphis, Tennessee, 38108. As I sit back there, I wasn't speaking today, but as I sit back there and listen to the plot against Mr. Ford, it sound like the plot they did at the school board, just like the good old mayor told the citizen of Shelby County to move on, look like he need to move on. Your last eight months or six, whatever month you got left in office, do something productive and leave that man alone.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Uh, okay, commissioners, uh, we are on 34A, uh, which again, we bifurcated, uh, this item without objection. So we're on 34A. If you're in the queue, that's the item we're speaking on. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to take a moment of personal privilege because, um, the, I just want to say a couple things. Sarah Carpenter mentioned about, um, the schools and I work in a facility, um, White Station High School that is supposed to be the flagship and it is, uh, it should be torn down. Because they keep dumping money into a building that is sick. And according to the records that they stated that this bit building was not only, um, has issues, but also that is, um, abs- obsolescence or something like that. And so again, we keep pouring money into these, um, facilities to fix them up, to renovate them, to no avail. So I just want to say that real quickly. Um, and again, back to this, um, substitute ordinance and again, this last minute, um, cloak and dagger, whatever. Understand, I want to make sure I understand this. So this is just to address the definition and that's all it's gonna do, is that correct, Chair?
Yes, that's correct. Um, and it's in part because of the feedback that we're getting today, we've already gotten, is to go ahead and address this part where I don't think there's any disagreement on. And then the rest of it can be sent back to committee to either amend, debate further, do whatever we want to do with it. Uh, but what's in front of us, 34A, is simply this substitute that deals with the definition of emolument that aligns with the ballot initiative that we passed in 33.
And so when we vote, we're gonna vote on this one.
Yeah, we're only voting.
Send the other one down, correct?
That's right, we're only voting on, on this, just the definition of emolument. What's in this, the handout.
And then, um, the other thing, I just wanted to thank Mr. Green because all, all of this information, oh my gosh, and I wish you would send the same information to my colleagues. And the way that you, um, set the timeline down for me, because again, I was not a commissioner at the time. And so I'm very concerned and I would like the purchase department also to be present at the next meeting and to explain the policy as far as, you know, the $50,000 threshold. And, uh, I know he's also new because according to the timeline, things is not adding up. And I do think, um, my colleague is correct, this seems very political, it seems very rushed and I will not be a part of this. And I just want to put that on the record, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Chief Collins, did you want to weigh, we're on 34A. Did you have any commentary on 34A?
First of all, Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter on 34A. However, I do think that we need to make sure that for the record, there were some things put on the record that the administration, uh, totally disagrees with. First of all, as you all know, that this, this ordinance that you're presenting has nothing to do with XAI. So we want to make sure that's clear. We also want to make sure that any appointment by the mayor has to be confirmed by this body. So you all do have the full, uh, compliment of making sure that persons who appointed by this body, appointed by the mayor are viewed and vetted by yourselves. Secondly, we, again, this is a definition of a term. This is not about an investigation and administration totally dis, totally does not agree with the fact that this is a witch hunt or an investigation on any particular individual within this body. And then lastly, I want to make sure that, uh, we stand in support of this to get, to go forward, to present a, what we would call a commission on ethics so that we can maintain our integrity, not only through Shelby County government, but all around Shelby County. Uh, it's important for us to make sure that we live a lifestyle that ensures that people know that we are entrusted with their treasures and that we utilize their treasures to the best of our ability to ensure that Shelby County goes forward. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Chief Collins. Uh, Commissioner Sugarman, you're back in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. And there's also a comment that I want to make sure that the listening public hears me and hears me louder and clear. I do not work for the mayor. And I am not running for the position of mayor, okay? I just want to make that very clear to the listening audience. And then last, I want to state that according to the U.S. Constitution, the underlying principle states there should be a checks and balance. And I'm not very clear that we do have that here, I'm not. I understand the charter says that the, uh, mayor is an administrator, but he's administrator who has commissioners who, you know, support whatever he wants. And I don't see very much checks and balance. And that's my personal view from being a commissioner for three years. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Again, just, uh, want to make sure we're not straying too far from 34A. Uh, Chief Collins, some of your commentary was not on 34A. So we need to be clear about what we're actually in front of us at this moment. Commissioner Thornton, if you have commentary on 34A, now's the time.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I was going to follow, um, that type prescription, but Chief Collins comments did talk, I mean, you allowed him to speak.
It'll, we'll be on 34B right after this.
I just asked that you give him the same type of feedback, you didn't interrupt him when he straight away.
Okay, Commissioner Thornton, you may proceed.
So, but for the fact that I would completely disagree with a lot of what you said. I participated in the subcommittee where there were clear, clear, um, over, um, reaches where it felt like an indictment, um, on the commission against one of my colleagues. There've been lots of times where this has been, um, clearly personal towards Commissioner Ford. So much so that it's, um, slandering his name, his legacy. And, um, it's really just unfortunate to just see that we continue to belabor these points. I understand, or I actually don't understand what's going on with the bifurcation today or what the intent of it is. But I do agree, like with, um, um, Ms. Ford, that the intent will have to reveal itself because it's obvious that there's a lot of intent going around, um, these particular, um, readings. This is clearly personal and it clearly is something that, um, if it happens to Ford today, is it gonna happen to me tomorrow? I have to question these things because, um, we've seen in the past, particularly with the wheel tax, where the three commissioners that went against the wheel of the mayor, coincidentally, their items were taken out of the budget. I've had, this is my third year of going through a budget season and it has been very much so a very difficult process of trying to get access to the funds. Right now, my $2.7 million, which was passed in January twice, is sitting on the mayor's desk. So don't ever believe that it's not personal, it is. And it has deep, deep implications if we allow it just to continue to just be something, um, that is not really what it is, which is a targeted attack against, um, a very skilled elected. So I would say, um, to the body, um, those of us that show up in committee, I would like to see the bifurcated item, um, table until the next term. And I do, um, hope that even in passing this particular section of it, that it's not used to be able to do further action. A lot of harm has been done and just to you, Commissioner Ford, I apologize for the way that you're being, you know, publicly, um, drug, um, very much so unnecessarily. And, um, let's just say, there are many other people who could potentially be in that same, uh, position. So, um, yes, I would also just like to acknowledge that my questions have not been answered. And so the process that the mayor has been able to go through, that is a completely different process, I would actually like to receive a better understanding of how that's able to happen. Particularly if this is not table in committee when it comes up again, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. So again, commissioners, we're on 34A, uh, which you have in front of us. Uh, we've already suspended the rule to make this the final reading. Uh, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Biles, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Weyland, we have 11 eye votes.
Okay, Adam, 34A passes. Uh, so commissioners, we're now technically on 34B. This is the item I want to refer to, uh, May four, May 14th. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Lowry. Can we do that without objection? We'll, we'll get to the, we'll get to the Q. Our Commissioner Mills.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm speaking because, well, first of all, I have a question. How many ethics complaints do we have right now at this moment?
Felisa Cox, Contracts Administrator, Ethics Officer.
Will you pull the microphone closer to you?
Sorry, okay. Felisa Cox, Contracts Administrator, Ethics Officer. I'm sorry, do you mean pending, open, or just total?
That need to go before the Ethics Board.
How many need to go before the Ethics Board? I don't believe we have, um, any open. Maybe one that I can recall.
Okay, what's that?
Uh, it's in reference to one of the clerks.
Okay. Um, and then you've got the one that's been on the webpage for years now.
I don't have it on the webpage.
It's been on the webpage for years. It, the Ford matter has been on the webpage for years, is still there. As of the other week, it was still there when I looked. Um, maybe that's why we can't get 13 people to serve on a board. I wouldn't serve on a board if I knew I were doing that. Um, as, as far as, and why didn't the mayor go before an Ethics Board? Why, why did attorneys do his written that Commissioner Sugarman has ethics complaint? Attorneys were able to handle that and nothing to see there.
Okay, Felisa Cox, Contracts Administrator, Ethics Officer. The complaint that I am aware of, where I was here, um, was actually sent out to an outside attorney to investigate. But it was the exact same process that we had for, uh, Commissioner Ford. There was nothing different, there was nothing different.
Okay, I just, and, and it is personal because the mayor went on, called and asked to go on KWAAM, 990 AM, and talk about ethics. And at that point, he's, I don't know, one, Commissioner Mills is against ethics. Commissioner Mills is not against ethics. Commissioner Mills is against weaponizing ethics for, for anyone. That's what I'm against and that's my concern in this. So it, it is, it's personal. It, it's not just, we're doing the right thing with ethics and I'm surprised it's come back. Anything that needs to be done does not need to go into effect this term. I agree with my colleague, it shouldn't even be addressed this term, but it does not need to go into effect until the next body and the next mayor comes on board. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, um, Chair. And so as far as, um, I have a question for, um, Cox, Director Cox. First of all, thank you for sending the, a copy of the contract to Red Rover. And so who do I ask or, uh, get a copy of the checks? The council checks that were sent to Red Rover? I did request that. And maybe somebody else can answer that who's here, if you cannot.
Commissioner Felisa Cox, Contracts Administrator. Uh, I believe that will come from finance, usually a purchase order is issued with these contracts. And they are, invoices are submitted and they're paid. But I, I would think that's finance.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm putting on, publicly, I'm requesting from finance to get copies of all checks that were expended to Red Rover. And the other thing, who do I contact, um, as far as taking down, uh, the website, on, on the county website where it says a Ford matter? Because, you know, from where I'm sitting, that seems like liable, but I'm not an attorney. To have that out there, so who do we contact? Attorney, um, Smith about taking that down? Because he has not had his day in court yet and is to put that on a, a website like that, the county website, disparaging one of my colleagues, we need to take that down. So who do I contact and how do I go about doing that?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, I can only guess IT.
Okay, so again, on record, I'm requesting that, um, Director Perry of IT, um, take it down because that is disparaging one of my colleagues. And it's not just a disparaging comment on him, but all of us. So I'm requesting, um, on record, that you take it down immediately. Because I see it as liable, he has not had his day in court. Um, and that's it for now, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Ford?
For those that came out, I'm just gonna go ahead and say thank you for coming out. I did not know that that many people were listening, but it seems as if that is the case. So thank you. And now you know, you gotta come back on the 14th of May. And pro, what day is that, Chair?
Uh, Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Which means the 19th is back down here?
Well, depending on what happens in the county.
Depending on what happens, yeah, all right. So the 14th and the 19th, y'all gotta come on back. But that's fine, that's fine. And I bet a lot of them being 3 and 109 and 1162 and as well as others. So if you came from outside of the district, thank you very much as well. And, um, I'm gonna do exactly what my father said. He wanted me to just stand down and chill out. Y'all see what I brought? For those that were listening, I said we had an infestation in Shelby County government. Had my raid ready. What y'all think I got in here? Those house shoes, yes. So I was ready. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna point it right there as a just in case. We can go back to committee. You're the sponsor of this item, Chair Weyland. You're the sponsor of this item, Chair Weyland. I had a lot that I was gonna say, but I am going to keep it. But I will say this. Watch out for those people that are running for mayor and everything else in 2026. I'm not running for anything else. But I will say this. There's a lot of documentation right here. I'll be bringing this back on the 14th and the 19th because I guarantee if the door is open and I have to start talking about what's in here, half the commission might be gone and some administrators as well. So I will, I have 30 copies of this around the county, one in each district. But I'm gonna leave it right there. So if people are interested in what's in it, let's see what happens on the 14th and the 19th. And I'm gonna leave it right there. Now, we ain't gonna take it upstairs, but we know, we just gonna leave it right there. And no media, you can't have it either. Because y'all might be in that book too. Back to you, sponsor of this ordinance.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ford. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded. Uh, it's been moved and seconded and be referred to May 14th Committee. Uh, that was done without objection. So item 34B will go back to committee. All right, item number 38.
Item 38 comes from the General Government Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Brooks. Item 38 is a resolution requesting the Chair of the Board of Shelby County Commissioners initiates the request for qualifications or single source procurement process to engage an outside consultant to perform a comprehensive process audit for the Shelby County Commission's operations, including the County Commission, Minutes Department, and Office of Equal Opportunity. This item requires an allocation of up to $50,000 from the County Commission's Consultant Services Fund to cover the cost. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Brittany Thornton, the site was deferred in April 14th, 2025 Commission Meeting.
All right, item 38 moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Uh, this item was deferred in our last commission meeting. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And so with this, uh, the process audit, all this is, is for somebody to come in and to look at our processes. Because we are not, um, running our office efficiently as we could. I'm not disparaging anybody again, but there's some things that could be updated or, you know, that are antiquated or some processes in order, so. be updated, or, you know, that are antiquated, or some processes in order so that the next Board of Commissioners, whomever they are, can come and say, okay, this is the process. Because I'm sure the staff can tell you how many times they'll tell me, Sugarman, that is not the process. That is not the order. Well, again, it took me, what, two or three years to figure out the process I'm still learning. And so this is just about efficiency so that when the next person comes on board, whoever that is, or Commissioners come on board, then I'll have to start at round zero. You know, they say, okay, these are the processes. This is how it goes, and there's no issues. And this is about efficiency in our office. And again, this is not disparaging anybody, but just like, for example, when I came on board, the first thing I asked, you know, we need a way that we can communicate with a deaf and hard of hearing. Because at my school, we have a large population. We're a school where people come from the tri-state area who are hard of hearing deaf, and they weren't able to keep up with what we're doing. And so as a result, we now have you two. So this is, that was a very efficient thing that we did with our resources. So all I'm asking again is that we once again spend this money so that we can have efficiency in our office. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 38. All right. We can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, and Chairman Weyler. Commissioners Morrison and Avent have voted no. Have 11 eyes and two noes.
Okay, item 38 passes. Item 39?
Item 39 comes from the Budget and Finance Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item 39 is a resolution amending the FY 2025 operating budget and appropriating and expending funds for the purposes of addressing poverty, education, healthcare, and various other needs in Shelby County. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2025 general funds in the amount of $665,000. Sponsored by Commissioners Miska Clay Bibbs, Commissioner Shontae K. Avent, Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr., Commissioner Charlie A. Caswell Jr., Commissioner Mikel Lowry, and Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. The site was substituted and amended in April 30th, 2025 Committee meeting.
Okay, can we get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Thornton, a second by Commissioner Caswell. Is there a presentation?
Thank you, Commissioner Avent. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Nora Sarsour with the Office of Innovation in the mayor's office. Before we just have a few brief words. Grateful opportunity to be here before you presenting a resolution to support several nonprofit organizations that provide vital services in Shelby County. In the spirit of collaboration, together with this commission body and members of the community, we propose reallocating once encumbered funds to the listed organizations for the benefit of the residents in Shelby County. I'd like to thank Commissioner Bibbs, Commissioner Avent, Commissioner Caswell, Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Lowry for your support on this resolution that we believe is necessary for the betterment of our community. And as always, and finally, I'd like to thank commission staff for all their hard work. Very briefly, I just want to acknowledge some of our guests in the audience who have been here for a couple of hours, and they're so patient, they're so eager to be here with you today. So first, we have Ms. Sharice Scott, the CEO and founder of Sister Reach, based out of Orange Mound, Ms. Niferydi Orin, the President and CEO of Clean Memphis, Dr. Stacy Spencer, Director and Senior Pastor at New Direction Church, Mr. John Carroll of City Leadership, Mr. Lewis Moore, President of the Military Retirees Tri-State Area, and unfortunately Reverend Danny Neal sends his regards. He was going to be here, but his wife had emergency procedure today. He'd like me to share that with you, so he won't be here. Finally, we are fortunate to live and work within Shelby County. Many people in Shelby County, no matter their background, are a product of the commitment of these organizations and the role that they play in our communities. So thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. Director Tipton, I have some questions, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Here's Director Tipton.
Okay. I'm sure these are great causes, great nonprofits, but the funding, these are ARPA dollars that were allocated, and the deadline was crossed. And this totally changes the scope of what the funds were assigned for. They were assigned for infrastructure. And I'm sure we've, I know we've got a ton of infrastructure needs that have not been met. If I started the list, we'll be up here till the sun comes up tomorrow. So why would we not keep them in infrastructure, knowing we have a ton of infrastructure needs, and it stays in the same scope? So that way, this money won't go out possibly, and then we have to pay additional money on the top of that money that goes out if this resolution passes? Because it doesn't, it's not the same scope.
Audrey Tipton, Director of Finance and Administration. The way the final rule was worded is that if there is money that becomes available that was encumbered as of December 31st, 2024, and you have other projects that have been obligated, you're allowed to use those funds for that project. That's basically, I can't answer the question on how it is to be used.
Okay. But, see, that, um... I would offer up a friendly amendment that this goes to infrastructure because it was allocated for infrastructure. I mean, we have fire stations that are in desperate need of repair. I won't even mention the jail that's in desperate repair, the schools that have just been mentioned today, repair. I mean, there are so many, and then the roads and the, I mean, sewer issues, all infrastructure that the county is responsible for.
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. The projects must be, must have been obligated as of December 31st, 2024. And those specific projects, well, they're not projects. They don't exist.
So the Office of Innovation has been working on this since when?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills, for that question. So as some of you might know, I'm new to the Office of Innovation, but not new to Shelby County. I've worked in the HR department, was a chief investigator. So again, thank you for your question. So like everything that we try to do, we try to use or do things to its full potential.
Time on. I'm out of time.
I couldn't give you that answer right now, Commissioner Mills. I could get back to you. I do apologize.
I have not gotten an answer in committee or here on this. I'll get back in the queue.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Ford?
All right, maybe I can give you some answers. Okay. First of all, for the organizations that came, thank you for your work, and I do want you to receive some funding. There's a way that you do particular things, and this reminds me of a rerun of what transpired when $4 million was put via resolution for infrastructure for unincorporated slash the munis and whatnot. And that money was going down in draws, but we made the deadline. This is the second time that this same pot Commissioner Mills is attempting to be tapped. The only difference is, is after December 31st. You want to talk about the final rule? I have looked at the final rule, and it says, what are the exceptions, and how can you take advantage of them as far as obligating and spending money after 1231, 2024? And it says on the following eligible legal and administrative related cost: reporting and compliance requirements. That's not what this is. Single audit cost. That's not what this is. Record retention, record retention and internal control requirements. Item 39 is not that. Property standards. Listening to your third base, coach. Got you. Okay. Property standards, no. Environmental compliance requirements, if it's in the same bucket of infrastructure, then yes. And then civil rights and nondiscrimination requirements, that's not what this is all about. But we were told the meeting before 1231 that everything needed to be allocated and appropriated, and there was only a $300,000 item left that we went ahead and allocated and appropriated. And I asked on record, does that mean that everything has its buckets? And the answer was yes. Now we're coming after the fact saying, oh, well, that's different. Again, I'm not against the organizations. If these are budget amendments for the FY 26, and we're only talking about like a 30-day difference, and we know how procurement is, let's do it the right way. Otherwise, we're simply saying that if a Commissioner allocates and appropriates, that if there hasn't been any movement, then that money is available. We could easily go through other monies such as the opioid and everything else, because with our conversation, you still got to go back and reconcile because a lot of that money hasn't been taken. But this Commissioner's not going to come and say, take away something that Commissioner Sugarman put together or another one of my Commissioners regarding the opioid money, because they came to the table and said they wanted to do X with it. I'm not trying to be that person to say, well, if they didn't spend it, I mean, I would give a common courtesy. This is not common courtesy. I'll get back in the queue.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Chair. And so a couple of questions. And as far as the Office of Innovation, it's interesting to see how all this money streams through the Office of Innovation. I'm just curious. So when was these, and I guess I'm not against these programs at all, put that on record first, when were they obligated?
So can you repeat that question, Commissioner?
When were these items obligated? Because again, we were told December 31st. Because back to Ford's comment, the $300,000 was, I understood it was the last of the funds? Because I remember I had a resolution for the $300,000 to go to a park in Hickory Hill. However, that money went to the chamber, and I still cannot get any information from the chamber on how they're using the money. So on record, again, I'm asking the Memphis Chamber to let this commission know how that money has been spent. So again, the question is, when was this money, the 600, what is it, $540,000 is in here, when was this obligated?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. First of all, all of the funds were obligated as of December 31st, 2024 for the ARPA funding. We did meet that deadline. The way the ruling worked, if any project that was already obligated became unattainable or canceled, then those funds, we could use them rather than send them back to the Department of Treasury. We could use those for any other project that was obligated. So the ones that Nora's presenting to you were obligated as of December 31st, 2024.
So all these programs were obligated back in December 31st?
Yes, they were. Yes, they were. Yes.
Okay. And so when you say obligated, so they had a resolution that came through the commission? Because I had a resolution and was voted down by this, my colleagues. Okay? And so I don't recall voting on all of these things. That's what I'm trying to figure out. When was it obligated? When did we vote on these?
We did not. They were obligated via an MOU because we found out from the final ruling that we could obligate projects outside.
Okay, so when you sent the MOU out, did you send it up to all the Commissioners? Because I never received that MOU.
There wasn't, it was no resolution.
Okay, so the MOU came from who? The Finance Department or the administration? Because again, if you look at the sponsorships, again, you see certain Commissioners left out. And again, I've been talking about Hickory Hill needing some, number one, a fire station fix, as well as Hickory Hill Park. And so people have been very aware of this. So my question is, where did the MOU originate? And who was, for example, a party to receiving information about this MOU?
So thank you, Commissioner Sugarman, for that question. So this has been a process, and the process has mainly been Commissioners or Commissioners of this body have reached out to us or community members, and that's how it organically came apart. Never do we want to exclude anybody, certainly not neighborhoods or any Commissioners. So this was the best of our ability to come up with some great, fantastic organizations who could use this money. And Commissioner Sugarman, if you're, I mean, if you're in the space where you just like to give this money back to Department of Treasury, that's what will happen.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Thornton?
Okay, so this is like brilliance. I consider this the first of our budget buffoonery because what really is this? I really don't understand why you felt the need to incorrectly emphasize that Sister Reach is based out of Orange Mound. It is not. And I think that y'all actually get a lot of pleasure out of saying Orange Mound without servicing it. And it really needs to stop. I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm almost livid at this point because this is not the first budget season where we've seen this happen. I just want to talk to my counterparts because it's not only just on the Commissioners that are vote, it's on you for coming down here and allowing this administration to serve some without even creating process for all. There is no question that every single person you've mentioned is not deserving. That's not the question. But you're sitting here making black-run organizations have to fight over the crumbs that you've created. It's a $1.6 billion budget. What do we look like playing these games over $600,000? Because what I know is, if you have another $600,000 of great organizations, you won't fund them this budget. You won't put them anywhere near the budget. And these processes, they're not fair because you do not actually honor the meetings and requests for funding from other districts. So if you cannot tell me that District 10 has not made a request, that I have not sat in meetings with constituents that have great projects, that have talked to the mayor about their particular projects, today even Memphis Mecca, you came down today talking about your project. There are plenty of great projects that deserve to have funding. You do not have clear process of why these projects should be prioritized. Plus, with the ARPA dollars, they were obligated. So at the time that they were obligated, did you not, whoever they were obligated to, you just co-sign on $600,000 worth of obligation to just be co-opted at a later date because it was unattainable? What is really going on? I just, I mean, I'm fine with us playing the games, but let's just acknowledge it as such and understand the impact of those who are not going to be served. And what you said, Orange Mound will not be served.
Okay. May I respond?
And I really, I really, there's nothing that the Office of Innovation can ever say to me moving forward. We really need to disband this particular office because the last thing you do is innovate for Shelby County. You selectively want to innovate. And this is a great example of how you do that and continue to do it. It's year three. I promise y'all, as the youngest person on this body, I cannot co-sign the BS because it's not serving the communities that actually need the resources. And I'm going to get back in queue to berate the Office of Innovation again because this is ridiculous.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Bradford?
Thank you, Chair. When I was initially approached about this, it was a much smaller amount going to a single organization, and that has since grown. So while my name is on this, I'm not going to be supporting this today. I do have some questions for Ms. Tipton related to this, and I think they've kind of already been answered. If we vote no on this today, is there an opportunity to pull these funds into something else, or does this go back to the federal government if this gets a no?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
If this gets a no vote today, is there an opportunity to allocate these funds to other areas, or does this just go straight back to the federal government?
It will go back to the Department of Treasury.
Okay. So today is our only chance to put these in the right places?
Pretty much.
Okay. You said it also has to be something encumbered. I believe we have some paving contracts in place that probably are not being funded through ARPA. Would there be an opportunity to use these funds as a change order to those contracts to pave a little bit more road or fill some potholes or things like that?
You cannot create a brand-new project.
Okay.
It has to be something existing already that's been obligated and encumbered.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm finding myself in agreement with some of what's being said by my colleagues. Had some similar questions on this item. I didn't get to attend committee, so apologies that I didn't hear the full presentation in committee. But my question was along some of the same lines of others. And in particular, I'm thinking, I'm wondering if this is, so Chief Tipton, if you could come back. I'm specifically, so, you know, as has been said, we have a lot of unmet needs within the core of, you know, county government's operations. We're running, we've been running a deficit for seven years. In particular, two meetings ago, we approved $215,000 for the trustee's property tax relief matching program. The full budget, I believe we passed last September, was 2.5 million. Could these funds supplement that so that it's not coming out of fund balance?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Finance and Administration. The project has to be active. So the award that we gave to the trustee has been fulfilled. So now, we would be opening up, you know, reigniting that particular project in order to give those funds to that project. So we can't do that.
It couldn't be a reimbursement? Couldn't be a reimbursement?
A reimbursement? I'd have to look into it, but I don't think so. They're very specific on how it can be used. I don't think it can be a reimbursement.
Okay. I'll leave it there. That was just my thought. It was, again, I know we have a lot of need, and again, it's nothing against any of these, not against the office, not against any of your intended grantees or what they do. But it's just, again, I think Commissioner Mills spoke to this and others, but just the tremendous amount of need around the county. And so, how did these come, how did these float to the top of the priority list? I'm not quite sure I understand that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Sorry, I think I cut the tail end of that question. So how did these questions, how did these organizations come to fruition? Your question. So again, organically. It's been over a few months, perhaps, maybe even days. What we're trying to accomplish here is really trying to get money to these folks who they're doing great work in the communities. And it really, we can't, we can't cover everyone, and we regret that. But we try to do as much as we can in the timeline that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go to Vice Chair Avant.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I think sometimes because of the back-and-forth amongst, you know, different entities, it can get lost, that you have organizations who are doing really good work and that an infusion of resources, when we know very clearly so many of them have been impacted by funding that has been removed from them by, and I think maybe that probably should have been something that you guys also shared with so many of the organizations that we're talking about, some of their federal funding and grants that they were receiving, they are no longer receiving. And so, as you were looking at the list of, I mean, all of us have wish lists, right?
Right.
There's 20 other organizations I would love that I've approached the mayor about and have not been funded. And there are some of our colleague, my other colleagues, who've been able to utilize ARPA funding for some of the organizations that meant the most to them, right? Or neighborhoods that meant the most to them and things that they wanted to do for their community. But I think wholeheartedly, when you have organizations across the county that are doing great work, and if you were able to culminate from a whole list of folks who come and ask, some that oftentimes are doing great work, but they don't rise to the level if folks are not advocating for them, right? And those organizations who, even in the last three months, have lost funding that is critical to them providing services to this community. And so, I know it's kind of hard to think through and talk through all of the things when you have to come before. And I hope that we take a posture that we don't need to berate people in order for us to get questions answered, asked and answered. There can always be a way for us, even if it's the answer we don't like, right? Even if it's the answer we don't like, that we don't have to berate people to make them feel uncomfortable, to come and share as you're doing part of your job. So I will be supporting this item. I'm hopeful that my colleagues will also be joining me in supporting this item because so many of these organizations, again, who are doing really great work but have been impacted by the fiscal climate we're in, with federal funding being lost and state funding being lost.
Thank you, Commissioner Avant.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Avant. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quickly, it's, I hope that we're not sending the message to organizations, and I don't remember seeing any of these organizations before us in the past, but I hope we're not sending the message that we don't want to give them funding. Because even though I don't know all of them, when I look at them, just using the word "infrastructure," if you say "infrastructure" and you look at the definition of "infrastructure" and you look at the list, then you will see several of these projects that will meet the definition of "infrastructure" one way or the other. And then, if you look at them through another lens, you will see that these projects represent community projects that are supported by partnerships of churches, individuals, and schools in poor neighborhoods that my colleague was just talking about, who have recently lost funding. And we know what that looks like, particularly in the black community. We know what that looks like, where the funding is already below the floor. So now, let's not send that message that we don't want to fund these organizations. I haven't seen them here before. So we have funding for organizations that's working toward the public good. Let's give the money. Give the money. It's going toward the public good. It's helping children, families, women, poor people. Come on. They don't have the money, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, Chair. And again, I can feel the frustration of my colleagues, and I got this about a week or so ago when I was asked to be a sponsor on this. And one of them is, you know, I've been on the crime scene about eight shootings in the last week or so in my community, one being a nephew who was shot eight times on Enfrager Boulevard and woke up to a call yesterday. So I can truly be upset, and I was as I talked to some, to the administration today and across the street to Mayor Young and others, and sent some messages that, letting them know how upset I am about what I'm seeing in my community. Yet, I do know the work of these organizations, and this is why I committed. I would have liked to know because I do have organizations that have lost funding in our community, that young people are not going to have resources this summer unless our community come together, as I have put the call to action out for us to do, to activate our churches and unite. But yet, I don't want to see no dollar go back to the federal government when they're cutting dollars from our community, and we know that these organizations are doing the work. And so, I'm supporting this initiative. Again, wish I would have known about processes and could have got other organizations in our community with MOUs, not knowing, again, as a newer commissioner, that process with ARPA dollars, because we came in on the back end of 180-some million dollars of ARPA dollars that were spent. But I just want to say, I support this, understand the frustration that, you know, it's a lot of work to do, but we got to do something, as the pastor said earlier, about all of the violence that's in our community, and it's only going to get worse with, to these organizations. I pray that it's touching those young peoples in a way that we can provide a meaningful thing for them to do before the summer come, or we'll see a lot more of them in this city. But I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Caswell.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Clay Bivs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am in support of this item because when it was, the conversation that I had with Office of Innovation was, these months, dollars would be sent back to the federal government. So for that reason alone is why I support it. But as you look through, to Commissioner Brooks's point, as you look through some of the projects that are happening, they each touch infrastructure in some way, form, or fashion. So I think that I hear my colleagues, when they're saying something around just timeline, and I think that that's the thing here around, at some point, we're seeing a missed opportunity to talk about timeline. Do want to stay on record that we are talking about these funds are from the '24, '25 budget?
'25.
'24, '25?
Yes.
Just one, because I don't want this to get confused with the '25, '26 budget.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Clay Bivs. Okay, Commissioners, we're now on the second round of discussion on this item. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. And CFO, I do appreciate what you did in the wee hours, December 17th, to try to get all the money out the door. Because we have an entity that's going to see us next week that let $55 million go out the door named Memphis Shelby County Schools. I don't want to see any money go out the door, and I know what you've done in order to try to help us regarding this. So I do have a couple of questions for the CFO, if you don't mind. And we talked about this a little bit, and I think this might be a great opportunity for the purposes of finding another route so that these organizations could have a possibility. Even though I don't support this as it is, there might be another avenue. So I do know that there's another tranche of opioid money that was supposed to come down, and I think it's a little bit under $4 million. And for the purposes of making sure that we may not necessarily add amendments to the budget, much less try to help the people here, but still keep this in where it's at and where it was supposed to be, would there be any challenge? And I know that the same organizations could find a way that we could contextualize the purpose to meet the test regarding the opioid money. Would there be an issue? And I'm looking big lens because I'm not trying to have any ask in the budget. Would there be any challenge with the new tranche that's come, where it's divided by 13 commissioners for the purposes of making sure that some of the things that commissioners are trying to do to help out organizations, much less their district, can we look at that as a possibility of funding these organizations here? I'm just trying to figure out a way so that whatever we need to do regarding infrastructure, handle that so that we won't be appearing as if we're taking from one from the other because that resolution passed over a year ago, and I'm just trying to stay within what we passed instead of just saying, well, there was no action, so we're going to do this. I still understand you don't want the money to go to the federal government. I get that. I'm just trying to figure out a way. Is there a way that with the tranche that has come, that we could easily divide that by 13 for the purposes of taking care of these organizations? And commissioners could also have ways to take care of other things? Like, if it's divided by 13, all of my money would go to cameras and it would qualify under there. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can make this happen. So I'm saying it sincerely because I don't want to take away, again, from that original $4 million. I do want to try to find a way for these things to be allocated, but I'm also looking at the budget that's coming up so that we won't have to go into fund balance. So if she can answer that, Chair, I'm just trying to find a way so that I just won't be a, I mean, I'm, I'm going to have to be a no, but if there's another route, I would love to hear.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Ford. Director Tipton, any response?
Yes. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. While I do appreciate what you're saying in trying to find another path forward for these organizations, unfortunately, I don't think they all qualify under the opioid funding that we've received. And also, some of the funds have already been, I guess, resolutions have already been done for some of the opioid funds. So the entire tranche that's coming down would not be available to be allocated to the 13. And the other part, as far as the funds were encumbered for infrastructure, a specific project, there was a purchase order that was done for the project that was returned. Unfortunately, they were able to, or fortunately, I should say, they were able to use most of the money that they were awarded. They were awarded over $4 million. So they were able to use most of the money. There was this piece that they could not use, that they thought they could use. So that is, those are the funds that we're talking about right now. And we can't create a new project in order to use those funds. We would have to send the money back to the Department of Treasury.
All right. Thank you, Director Tipton. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Just many comments. The words that I choose to use are intentionally delivered. I stand behind the Office of Innovation, just doesn't serve District 10, and I would love to see the day to case otherwise. This office is not positioning itself to actually be fair. And even if it is true that funds that were obligated were not spent and they availed themselves, I would love to know what was the fair process of noticing the commission because we would never have that awareness. And these conversations, I have talked to Director Thompson on numerous occasions, went to his office to convey the needs of the district. So why would District 10 not be considered? I think, again, it is a very brilliant move to put us between a rock and a hard place. This is not the first time that the administration has done this. So at this point, these are intentional plays, to which I would say, anybody that is sponsored and able to get one of your organizations in it, you're, what do you have to say? You're getting funded. You don't have the same burden of neglect. And I too, Commissioner Caswell, can share many stories, as I recently drove down in my community, a dead body sitting that I had to call in and report. There's lots of trauma in my neighborhood. I don't even have to go far. So that's why I take huge offense to us talking about Orange Mound when I actually very much so intelligently know that this community is under resource. And I just have to ask to Commissioner Caswell, has your contract been signed by the mayor for the $600,000 when it has already been signed? Okay. Well, for District 10, the 2.7 has not. So when you have a mayor that is literally weaponizing the purse strings, everybody that you hear speaking is a direct report to the mayor. It is a real problem. And again, to anyone that is a part of Power Center, Step-by-Step, Lamoan, how many times have we funded Lamoan? I'm just very much so amazed to see that Lamoan is a high-priority entity that we need to invest in. The Comforter Foundation, Sister Reach, Clean Memphis, I mean, really? And to continue to harp on this point that these folks are doing great work, how insulting are those words when it leaves off so many people who are equally doing great work? I just, I feel like today, you know, depending on how this vote will go, I just would ask that everyone that's going to receive their check, that when it comes time for the other people to go up to bat, that you will also be here to stand with them in solidarity. Don't just get your money and leave the rest out to dry. Because I'm telling you, this is my third budget season, and that's exactly what we're on track to do. We have made our requests. We have tried to follow processes that have been outlined, and we continue to get the short end of the stick. This is the most disgusting administration that I could ever be made aware of because the way, again, that you're making us fight over crumbs is horrible, and it's directly impacting a lot of people. And Lee Harris, you're at the helm of it.
All right. All right. Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Chair. And so, again, I just have a few questions. So as far as the MOU, where did it originate? And then, how do I get a copy of the MOU? Because my concern is the processes. So many times Hickory Hill has been left out of the equation. Is, I guess, if we're not in favor with the mayor, then your district suffers. The other thing I want to say is that I don't, we have not seen any resolutions come before us regarding the opioids funding. So again, to be fair to the commissioners, you know, I think that this time, we need to divide the money up in our district so we can spend it in our districts. For example, if you're in the unincorporated areas, like some of my district is, Hickory Hill's, I think, is like 60% city and 40% Hickory Hills, I think it's like 60% city and 40% county, that the parks have not been maintained in over 10 years and probably won't be. In my district, they are ready to sue because they're under-resourced. We're number one in car thefts. You know, I don't go around seeing dead bodies, but I go around seeing people who are unhoused on a regular basis. And so I would like to also know, is there some kind of data that you went by or some type of rubric that you went by as far as, you know, determining which projects or so? And I just want to say, I do support this, I just don't appreciate the process. And for the people in Hickory Hill, okay, I want to say this, I do recognize that a lot of the individuals in Hickory Hill are leaving. They're leaving. They're going to Olive Branch or DeSoto County. And I've said this in many of my emails that I've sent to everybody, not only the commission, as well as the city side. They're leaving. They're saying their schools are horrible. We have no optional programs or option schools in my district. We have no police station in our district. We have a fire station that needs upgrading. I can go on and on and on, and we pay 10% of all local, and this is not indictment of you at all. It's just, I want to understand the process. And that's why we passed a resolution for our own commission to put in place an audit. And maybe the administration needs to do the same thing, put some type of audit as far as processes so that we all know the processes, so it can be more objective as opposed to subjective. And again, Hickory Hill keeps getting left out of the equation. I'm not in favor of the mayor, and he knows that. But again, there's some things I do support that he's doing. But to continue to come before this commission and continue to have my district voted down because some of the commissioners, my colleagues, the mayor, whomever thinks that, okay, you didn't vote a certain way, then your district's punished. It should not be that way. Thank you. So again, I would like to talk about the MOU. And who do I reach out to?
Commissioner Sugarman, I was trying to, going to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
You will need to reach out to legal. It is my understanding they will not be here in person tonight. They have expressed to me that some of the comments from your colleagues have been unprofessional, and they will not be subjecting themselves to in-person questioning in that manner. I feel the same way about my colleague and my staff tonight being told somebody's getting back in the queue specifically to berate them. So I understand where they're coming from. But MOUs originate out of our legal department, and so County Attorney Iverson and Megan Smith will be able to assist you with finding the MOU and talking through the process.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bradford?
I'll try and be quick. Thanks, Chairman. Ms. Tipton, one more question for you. I think I already know the answer, but I'm just trying to exhaust all of them. What about our mental health facility? Could this be put towards that? Because that was ARPA dollars.
Director Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance, yes, it is ARPA dollars, and it is moving forward.
But could this $665,000 be put towards that project?
It is active, yes.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to move this $665,000 to the mental health facility.
All right, Commissioner Bradford has moved to amend this to send the funds to the mental health facility, seconded by Commissioner Morrison, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thornton, that was ejected to by Vice Chair Avant. So we'll now, we'll take a vote on that motion.
Chair Whaley, before you take the vote, Deputy Director Sanders is here, and you may want to hear from him about the need for more funds for that. It is my understanding that has been fully funded through the ARPA dollars. It is moving forward, and I, you know, costs may escalate. But the projects that we have presented before you today, that we do have people here who are happy to speak on them and about what they can do in the community, those are not fully funded. So again, I understand you're looking for somewhere else where this may work, but you may be putting money that's not needed in that project. So I just thought, before you vote, you might want to hear that information.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we're happy to hear it.
Good evening, Darren Sanders, County Engineer. And just, I guess, to address the immediate question, the mental health facility is 100% funded, so for the, you know, for the full construction. So at this point, you know, we wouldn't really just add to the bucket that's already full, basically. It's a good problem to have.
Okay, thanks, Director Sanders. So Commissioner Bradford, what I'm hearing is that if it's not needed, we send it back then if we're not using it for that project.
Well, I just know from construction that always having a few extra dollars on hand is never a bad thing, and there could be some options or some upgrades in the construction process that we could probably put that money to. So I would like to go ahead and vote on this.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so we're on discussion of the motion to amend it from Commissioner Bradford. We're going to limit this discussion time to two minutes each, okay? Commissioner Mills?
Not on the amendment. I know it was short, $5 million, because we took $5 million from the mental health facility to put towards the jail. So there's that, too.
Okay, great. All right, Commissioner Ford?
So I just heard that the buckets would match, which is what I stated in the final rule that I got from not just the federal website, but also from an attorney's office, that this would be a qualification that could be met. So I'm going to support this. I don't know if it's going to get anywhere. I just hope that we don't get to the point to where, you know, we stopped having courtesy around here a long time ago. And then we bring great folks down here, and then we want to win an Emmy, Grammy, Oscar, and Tony for a performance. I'm going to support yours, but I do want, after this motion is exhausted one way or the other, to have one final request, but I'm going to have to suspend the rules for the purposes of asking that request, but it deals with funding as well. So I'll go ahead and say I support this item. I'll yield to the next person. I'll yield back to you, Chair. But I'm going to need to get back in for a request from the CFO that will go with what you're bringing next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I ask, Mr. Sanders, could you come back up? Because this is interesting motion to me by Commissioner Bradford. So you're saying that the budget is totally filled. I would just say this, if we vote this down, and you ever come to this body for a budget amendment for that project, you would be burned at the stake. So, and I'm not saying that as a threat, I'm just saying, we take this very seriously. So I want to make sure there's no universe in which you, that project would need these funds. So I understand you have a boss, and they may be asking you to take a position, but I need an honest answer. Can that project use these funds?
Okay, Darren Sanders, County Engineer, and let me say to Commissioner, I'm glad I got a chance to kind of come back up. And it is funded partially by CIP, so, and partially through ARPA. So, so those funds could potentially, I guess, replace CIP funds, but I have to check with, okay, Director Tipton to be sure.
Director Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. I think Mr. Sanders is correct, well, I know he's correct. The funds for the mental health facility, part of it is coming from ARPA, and the other part is coming from CIP. So we could lessen the amount that comes out of CIP and fund it through ARPA. But as been stated, the projects that we have on the table right now are earmarked to use the dollars. So it would be a better place, I think.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. They're earmarked unfairly. So just to each of the organizations that are to directly benefit, please understand this is not a no. It is a no to this pathway. You still have every option because the commission will approve what is presented by the mayor. I think we have three more meetings. I would love to see what budget is going to be presented so that we can actually obviously rework this to work for everyone. But it's been my understanding that this body has actually worked collaboratively to be able to hear what each district wants and actually factor that into the budget. We cannot continue to move forward with these budgets selectively, letting some projects get recognized. It's just not fair. I don't think, I mean, does that actually make sense to you? That that's the way that we should go about doing county governance? Constituents in districts like District 10, which is not a part of this, notice how many districts are in it. You literally have Clay Bibbs, Avant, Bradford, Caswell, Lowry, and Brooks. Who's missing? What's what?
Point of information.
These are the sponsors of this item, and so when it comes down to this, it is a great idea, and I do agree with my colleagues that these are great ideas, great organizations. But why are we refusing to acknowledge the fact that it is not allowing for all greatness to be represented, at least fairly across each of the districts? And again, I say, I see one particular item. I heard Chief Tipton talk about how these are diamond in the rough organizations, almost to say that these organizations have not been funded. Lamoan Owen, since I've been a commissioner, has repeatedly received investments. I'm just saying, the impression that you've given is that these organizations are deserving, and they are. But I would just say that others are as well. I would just like to ask to Director Sanders a question.
All right, Commissioner Thornton, you're out of time. We've already spent a very large amount of time on this particular item, and we still have quite important business to get to. So you can get back in the queue for another round on this item, but I'm going to go to Vice Chair Avant.
I just want to be clear that none of these organizations are actually in my district. But there are organizations that are doing great work in the county. And so, just so that we're clear and on the record, I'm sponsoring something that I think are good organizations doing great work, that are actually in my district.
All right, thank you Vice Chair Avant. Commissioner Caswell? Commissioner Caswell, you're in the queue.
I'm sorry.
Two minutes.
Sure. Again, appreciate the opportunity. I want to just say this on record. Being that none of these, though I sponsor this, just like I sponsor District 10 $2.7 million and supported that. And again, that didn't benefit my district, like none of these organizations did. Just like when the mayor came and wanted to do something in South Memphis, and we took the CIP dollars and put it between our districts collectively. We look at opportunities, again, I would like to see equally how every one of these 13 districts can get $2.7 million for our district. I'm $2.1 million short for District 6. And I'd like to see the timeline that it took for my $600,000 that we got voted on wait earlier than the $2.7 that I fought and called and kicked and screamed to get done while those people was doing work in the district and what didn't have none of the dollars to do the work with, and the timeline that we're seeing right now with this $2.7 million. So, you know, because we know how, and some of us may can communicate regardless, we can agree to disagree and still be able to do the business of our people that we represent. And don't have to be a puppet because we agreed with somebody to get something done. I think that, you know, the process, and I saw this, you know, play out again. I'd support the mental health. If there's something that we can get done, let's get it done. But let's also remember that these organizations fought through and did the process, however the process was done, so that they can be here today to get presented. So I hate that it's shifting on y'all in this way. And y'all see, again, we can talk about, because people can talk to people to try to get things to agree to disagree. We want to be, oh, they're a puppet. That's foolishness. I want to see how we can get $2.1 extra million to District 8, District 6, I know 8 would like it. And work on, make a, I'm sorry, thank you for that.
All right, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Caswell. Okay, Commissioner Ford?
All right, thank you.
Second round on this.
Right, this should be my last so that I can get to that request. I don't have any questions for you. You've done your job. You've done the job that you were told to do, et cetera.
No, it's voluntary, Commissioner Ford. My background's a lawyer, so I won't be told.
Ma'am, respectfully, I said you did a great job and everything else. But I need to get my one minute and 39 seconds in, so I won't come back in. I appreciate you respectfully. CFO, you just stated that that project has some CIP, which means that things can be moved around if they want to be moved around. Now, I could easily ask, what CIP project did we modify accordingly, just like how we had to do in order to piecemeal the jail money? There was a great amendment that came where we stated that we could do, we could do the project, CIP, the mental health, and then use the other money for the jail, but people were adamantly against it. Now I'm hearing, oh, we use CIP money for the project. So it's basically being said, respectfully, I got 49 seconds left. Take all the time you want after it gets to zero, please. Because the point I'm trying to make, and I'm not escalating my voice this time, is that things can be done if people want it to be done. The motion on the floor is to take out of the same bucket, which we've already done. The folks are here and they want a solution. I think they appreciate the debate, but they want a solution. So there's multiple solutions up, and I'm going to support this one because y'all have already shown it can happen. We can move things around. And I'm going to say this last thing in my last five seconds. I find it very difficult for CFO office to say that the rest of the $181,335,000 is actively or out the window, and there isn't anything else that's going to be coming. So I'm going to leave that there, and I'm supporting this item.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. To Director Sanders, I have a question. So the way that these funds were allocated and underspent hypothetically with the mental health facility, if you do not spend all of the funds, what is the process of the remaining funds being reallocated?
I would have to, yeah, that would be more of a Director Tipton question.
Okay, if someone could answer.
Director Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. All of the funds currently have been allocated. If something comes back that cannot fulfill the obligation, it can be applied to an active project or projects that, I guess, exceed the amount of the funding that we receive. Any projects that we have already obligated as of December 31st, 2024. You can't come with anything new, so to speak. It's kind of hard to explain, but you cannot come up with a brand-new project now to apply those funds to.
So we would have to send it back to the Department of Administration. So in the worst case, if we were to just reallocate the funds to the mental health facility, if the project were under budget and there were funds, these same organizations could come back up to receive allocations, right? In the same way that they did at this time, they could do it again on the other end of the mental health facility?
So when the mental health facility was presented, it was being presented using ARPA funds. And we did lessen how much of the ARPA dollars we were going to use in order to fund sheriff. So we proposed that the other part of the funds needed would be out of CIP. So I hear what Commissioner Bradford was saying, instead of taking all of those funds that we allocated for CIP, just add these funds because they've now become available to the mental health facility.
If I may, Chair, this is a point of information for the...
Commissioner Thornton, we've got to, we've got to at some point take some votes, okay, on these items. I think we've discussed it around and around. Votes will help us, I think, get to where we need to be.
Can I just get clarity around just one particular point?
The time, this is your fourth round on this item.
I'm also not in the item.
And so we can, and we're all welcome to vote how you want to vote. Okay. All right, Commissioner Brooks, and then we're going to take this motion from Commissioner Bradford to a vote.
And I'll be ready to do.
And I'll be ready to do that. I just need some clarity and understanding on this amendment from this sponsor. I need to understand, just for clarity, are we voting on an amendment from a sponsor who represents a wealthy district with zero poverty, zero food banks, zero shelters, homeless shelters, zero free community food, et cetera? The sponsor who has the luxury of donating money to his community orchestra, Chamber of Commerce, Police Foundation, and equestrian shows, and other privileged serving amenities? Is that the amendment we're voting on? That's the sponsor amendment we're voting on?
Commissioner Brooks, we're voting on an amendment to assign these funds to the mental health facility.
Okay. And this sponsor, I was just trying to make sure I put it in context so that I could pass my vote holistically, have everything considered.
Okay, yeah, this motion was made, motion was made by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Thornton, and we're working our way up surely to a vote soon, so thank you, Commissioner Brooks.
Call the question.
Okay, great. All right, so the question's been called. We're voting on the motion by Commissioner Bradford to reallocate these funds from the designated entities in the resolution to the mental health facility. A yes vote adopts that amendment, a no vote does not adopt that amendment. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Gordon, and Morrison. Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley have voted no. We have seven ayes and six noes.
All right, so that the amendment passes from Commissioner Bradford, so we're back on the main motion as amended. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on Item 39 as amended.
After the vote, point of personal privilege, so I can give my request.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Gordon, Lowry, and Chairman Whaley. We have eight eye votes.
All right, Item 39 passes.
Point of personal privilege.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ford.
Very quickly, before CFO Tipton and all her cohort leaves, I have one request, and I think that all of us may need to know that information. My request is for the opioid numbers to be reconciled for the purposes of seeing how much in opioid dollars we do have for the purposes of being prepared for this next budget. She stated that there are some dollars that they just got recently that have been allocated. I need to see those resolutions so that we can see exactly what's on the table, just in case anybody's inclined to state that we need to look at either possibly dividing it by 13 or doing something that would benefit all, because we've already had too many conversations about District this, District that. So I think the most equal way to be is whatever hasn't been allocated and appropriated, if we can just divide by 13 and move on, maybe that'll help us with our budget, Chair. Thank you. That's my request.
Okay, thank you. Madam Departmentary, please read Item 40.
Item 40 comes from the Hospitals and Health Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item 40 is a resolution requesting a status update from the Tennessee Valley Authority, TVA, and Memphis Light Gas and Water, MLGW, on the remaining steps and time necessary to connect XAI to the local utility grid, thus ending all need for temporary gas turbines at the facility in South Memphis, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. This item was amended in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
Okay, if we get a move, and seconded by Commissioner Ford, seconded by Commissioner Commissioner Ford, can you give us a committee report?
Sure. Chair, this came down with a favorable recommendation, and there were no amendments except my sponsorship.
Okay, all right. We have a few comment cards on it. Did you, as the sponsor, did you want to make any comments?
I'll be very quick, since my other sponsors there. This is something that is just a request. I believe that this is something that we definitely need to know, even though we're not responsible for MLGW. We do need to have information that we need, that people have asked us for. Subsequently, Chair, I do plan on bringing a resolution regarding the $411,000 item that we passed regarding air quality for 38109 and 1116. We did get that together. The deputy director is here, and we did make sure that that drawdown of that federal money did come in place so that we can make sure that 38109 and 1116 regarding air quality is something that we do monitor. So on the 14th, I plan on bringing a resolution stating that we have monthly status updates for the purposes of making sure that the air quality is monitored, not just for 3109 and 1116, but for the outside zip codes that would also be affected. And lastly, this also makes sure that any other funding that we did put in follows our permanent rules, so this also does that as well, Chair.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks, Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you, Chair. I think we have some speakers on this item, no?
Well, I have some comment cards.
Comment cards, correct. I'd like to hear their comment cards.
Yeah, great. Okay, great. All right, so if you, I've got comment cards for Item 40. You'll have two minutes each. When I call your name, just come up, state your name and address, and you're speaking on Item 40. Madeline Stowe?
Good evening, everyone. Hi. Thank you for bringing up the air quality, the air control monitors.
Sorry, Madeline, would you just state your name?
My name is Madeline Stowe. Do you want my address?
Yes, please, thank you.
All right, it's, I have to remember, I'm relatively new. What is it, 2736 Lombardi Avenue, 38111. I have been following Elon Musk for a very, very long time. I have heard all the emotion, the justifiable emotion of what's happening in 38109. It's of great concern. I've studied him since 2015. I understand his techniques, and I would like to say to you that what is really interesting to me is that in all of this conversation, nobody's really talking about the massive scale-ups that is about to happen. So we have had Ted Townsend and Brent Mayo talk about 1 million, this is going to get technical, 1 million GPUs, which will take approximately 1,000 megawatts of power. We know what they currently have, provided by MLGW, which is 150 megawatts of power, with an additional 300 megawatts of power pending approval. Without the gas turbines, they will not reach that first scale-up. In order to compete with Meta and other hyperscalers, they're going to have to go to 2 million gigawatts of power, which is essentially 2,000 megawatts of power, if I have this right. I'm a little foggy right now. So the question is, why, we have Doug McGowan's MLGW, who has claimed to city council that they have visited the sites, but said nothing about the extra turbines that have been recently discovered. We have county health saying that they've had people come to visit the site, but they saw nothing, said nothing about the 35 extra turbines until they were caught by the Southern Environmental Law Center. Who's monitoring this? Who is XAI compliant to? Why are these turbines continuing to run? When are you going to create a deadline that would get these questions answered?
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Want to make sure we can hear from everyone tonight, but we appreciate you coming and being with us.
I understand, I understand. But I would like to pass a sheet to the commission that has a series of questions that really drill down on certain responsibilities and what's happened.
Okay, great. We'll take whatever you've got. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Gilbert Barnes Carter III.
Chair, I'd like to move to suspend the rule for the purposes of allowing Mr., I think he spoke one time already on another item. If he did, I just want to move to suspend that rule.
Oh, sorry. So we have a rule where you speak on one item per meeting. We try to stick to that, because as you can imagine, if we didn't, then we'd have comment, you could comment on every single item. The rule is meant to be able to comment on one item per meeting.
Yeah, and if I'm overruled, I'm overruled, but I'm just giving the courtesy.
So what we're saying is, we're suspending the rule at this occasion to allow you to speak again, but just for future reference, it's better to pick the item that you, or you can do a general comment and talk about several items, but that's just the rules and how we typically operate. So state your name and address again for the record.
Gilbert Barnes Carter III, 37 West Waldorf Avenue, 38109. First and foremost, thank you, Commissioner Ford, for being so gracious. The Southern Environmental Law Center recently released their aerial imagery that revealed how XAI officials have brazenly lied to the general public here in Memphis and Shelby County about the number of methane gas turbines that are actually in operation at the Colossus Supercomputer Facility in Westwood. I find that to be extremely atrocious. I find it to be very evil, very villainous on a number of fronts. But that alone should compel you all to vote in favor of this resolution. But I want to raise the stakes to Commissioners Brooks, to Commissioner Knox Avent, to Commissioner Ms. Bibbs, to Commissioner, as I'll go down the list here, Thornton, and Sugarman, and Caswell. I want to ask you all this question. How do we go forward past XAI? Once we win this victory, how do we activate political will and social capital among other black people to undo the decades of legacy pollution by other high-impact companies such as New Core Steel, TVA, and Valero? Valero started their operations in 1941. TVA started theirs in 1949. To the other commissioners on this elected body, I'm sure if your constituents, especially the ones in the predominantly white areas, were as vehemently opposed to this as our people in Box Town, Westwood, Walker Homes, and West Junction, your representation would be emblematic of their resistance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. Next up, we have Jasmine Bernard.
She had to leave because she wanted to get a 5 on her AP test tomorrow. Can I read the letter, please?
Okay, we just need to make sure we get a card for you then.
I have one.
Okay, you can speak for yourself, if you'd like.
Can I speak for her?
Yeah, we don't, unfortunately, we don't allow that. You can send, no, no, it's okay, I understand. You can send, if you want to send it via email, exactly what her testimony is to us, that would be fine as well. But when I get to you, you're welcome to add any additional commentary that you'd like to. Okay, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Orion O. That's okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
I'm frustrated that Commissioner Morrison isn't here. Sorry. Orion Overstreet, 605 Houston Street. I was going to speak to her. I'm very angry right now. I was going to show her, this is what I've been working on while we've been waiting these four hours to speak, because the University of Memphis is paying me to study music composition in its finals week. And I don't know what she was working on, but she hasn't been here for a lot of this, and she's been on her phone for a lot of this, and she's being paid by our tax dollars to listen to the people. And she has posted publicly online on Facebook inviting Republican Party, members of the Republican Party, to come and support XAI against radical anti-business extremists, which is not what I am or what my friends are. I want to be very clear, I don't want to be here right now. I have 18 credit hours and a park ranger job to prepare for, and friends and family, and so much late work because I spend all my time right now doing this. And I spend all my time right now doing this because this piece is an orchestra piece. It's almost done. It's the overture for a musical I'm writing about this fight specifically. The playwright is here. And I wrote it over the course of many months, walking through the hardwood forests, and walking through the floodplains, and walking through the streets of Box Town, and walking through the streets downtown. Memphis means everything to me. I keep coming back because I want to raise my children here. And I'm 20 years old, and when I'm 40 years old, I want to be able to breathe still underneath the sky I love. So now that you know that I'm serious, and I'm going to be here for a while, anything short of total full stop on the XAI operation is a betrayal of the people. We are all grownups. We all know that, oh, they'll get back to us, and, oh, we're going to send them, you know, questions and ask for answers, and they've already shown that they don't want to give that to us. That's already been very clear.
Thank you so much.
You'll be getting, thank you, you'll be getting emails from us. We're going to be asking for moratorium. I hope that you stand with us, and if you don't, good luck on midterms.
All right, great, thank you. All right, next, we have Mel Elef Therian. No, I had to leave as well. Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, Richard Massey. All right, name and address, three minutes, I'm sorry, two minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, Richard Massey, 3615 Central Avenue. Just two days ago, Elon Musk was once again able to wield his wealth at the expense of regular people, in a state that we've often highlighted as an example of Elon's immense greed. Elon was able to establish a company town in Texas, in Boca Chica, a company town where SpaceX will have complete jurisdiction to control local planning, to pollute and dump with no oversight, and to exploit workers with predatory wages. And no, this isn't the 1880s or the Gilded Age where company towns are propping up frequently across the country. This is 2025, where an extreme concentration of wealth is concentrated in the hands of a few people. And at the forefront of that billionaire class is a man that has leveraged his wealth to hollow out any federal oversight of his companies. So let's take a brief look at what's taken place so far with the EPA, who protects communities like South Memphis. January 24th, the EPA Inspector General was fired by the Trump administration. February 20th, 388 probationary EPA workers are fired. March 12th, the EPA announces that their environmental justice arm is going to be dissolved. April 22nd, EPA fires 280 staffers who worked on reducing emissions in communities like South Memphis. Three days ago, the EPA eliminates the scientific research office, and for the first time in its 55-year history, the Clean Air Act is weakened by Republicans in Congress. Folks, this is why we can't separate Musk in DC from Musk in Memphis. And unless we have the courage to enforce accountability, to shut down the methane gas turbines that are actively spewing formaldehyde and nitrous oxide, we will become yet another example of a city held beneath the thumb of corporate greed. All of us want Memphis to become an innovation hub and a tech hub, but not at the expense of residents' health, air, and water. I implore you to consider the gravity of this moment, and the weight of fact that people have already perished as a result of environmental injustice in South Memphis. People have already been put in the ground as a result of this crisis, and we're standing here to tell you, no more. No more lining the pockets of executives at the expense of our neighbors. No more putting South Memphis's ability to breathe on the auction table. And it is absolutely inexcusable for longtime South Memphis residents to come before you, pleading with you to ensure that their children and grandchildren can breathe clean air as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we have Christine Fox. All right, good evening. Ms. Fox, just state your name and address. You have two minutes.
All right. Christine Fox, 38112, District 7. Good afternoon, or evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the resolution that is before you, a resolution that is long past due. It has been almost a year since XAI moved to Memphis. And this is the first time there has been any genuine effort by this body to demand transparency and accountability. The communities of the 38109 zip code, especially Box Town and all communities within Shelby County deserve answers to their questions and deserve to have their concerns addressed. Pollution does not know or respect district boundaries, and neither does the biblical mandate to love thy neighbor. I live in District 7. My zip code is 38112. I love and care about many people in District 9, in Box Town, in 38109. I'm concerned about their lives and their well-being. When I attend these meetings and I see commissioners and council members carrying on side conversations, scrolling their phones, and ignoring community members who take time out of their day to come speak before you, I am troubled by the astounding lack of respect shown. When I see elected officials who can't be bothered to cast a vote on issues that affect people's lives in a very real and dangerous way, I feel disgusted and angry. And I would say to those of you who try to distance yourselves from the issues being brought before you and who remain silent while the lives of hundreds of people, children, and families are sacrificed to greed and corporate profit, we see you. It's not just the folks in Box Town and the activists who are watching. It is all concerned citizens and caring neighbors in every district of Shelby County. I urge all of you to pass this resolution and work with the city council to hold those directly involved in polluting and exploiting our communities accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here again. Kimberly L. Davis.
Good evening. Kimberly L. Davis, 1753 Berwin Road, 38116. I am in support of this resolution, and we, the people, need answers. I also want to state that southwest Memphis is not a sacrifice zone and that we have elected people to represent us on county commission and city council that will have the best interest of the people of Shelby County and Memphis in their hearts and vote and act accordingly. Elon Musk does not need another fanboy, or fangirl, or anyone in our local government to help increase his wealth. We, the people, need our local leaders to hold our health in the highest priority. I have stated before this body that southwest Memphis is in a public health crisis. And I really hope you hear me. I am not an alarmist. I am at best a strategist and a social scientist. And I have been observing city council, county commission, our local leaders, and also how we conduct ourselves when local, when industries come into our community. I've unfortunately seen some of our leaders work frantically to make sure that these industries are made a priority, that their needs are held higher than the needs of the people who elected them. Now, I do want to speak on a concern I have about ground-level ozone. Now, Shelby County has been in non-attainment before. And it's my concern that we are right there again. Now, I can't say whether we are or not because we don't have adequate monitoring in the area that has the highest concentration of pollutants. Now, things that contribute to ground-level ozone are automobiles, and TVA is bringing in additional 500 vehicles, also oil refineries like Valero, and methane gas.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, thank you for being here tonight.
I'll send y'all an email because I have a whole lot more. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next we have C. Jurgen. Please correct me. Please correct me.
Uh, Jurgen.
Jurgen, Jurgen, all right. Name and address, and you all have two minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is C. Jurgen. I live at 2157 Seton Place, zip code 38139, in Germantown, Tennessee. Commissioner Brandon Morrison is my commissioner, and she is not here right now. I want to call attention to that. Like my good friend Ryan also did, I want to call attention to the fact that David C. Bradford Jr. is also not here. Well, was not here, representing Collierville. I think I have read a lot of the information coming out from the Shelby County Republican Party on why they support this. They are talking about job creation. They're talking about economic growth. That's not what this is creating. It's creating an extremely limited amount of jobs, and it is building a system of industrial exploitation in southwest Memphis. It's a 40-minute drive for me to get to southwest Memphis from Germantown. I graduate high school on Friday, and I have been making that commute more times than a high schooler should be expected to because this, this city is my home. And I am doing what I can to fight for it. It is a city with an extremely strong history of environmental justice. We have, there's landmark environmental justice litigation that has arisen out of Memphis. Citizens to Reserve, Overton Park versus Volpe. It is a legacy that we can't cast off in the name of job creation or an abstract idea about the economy. These are real people on the ground being affected. And I am extremely thankful to Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Ford for coming with this resolution for more transparency. I think we need to go further. I think we need to take some active steps to combat the system of industrial exploitation in our most exploited communities. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. All right, next up we have Brianna Bird. Brianna Bird, still out there. Okay. Julia Britt.
Also had to leave.
Okay. Jonathan Williams.
Also had to leave.
Okay, thank you. Adrienne Martin. All right, just state your name and address. You have two minutes.
Adriana Martin, 803 Berwood. Every day that XAI operates these turbines in the black community, contributing to the causation and exacerbation of respiratory and neurological conditions. The omnipresence of white supremacy and capitalism prevails while our community's health, the wealth that really matters, suffers. Take our lungs, take our bodies, and take our health off the oxygen block. Every time a child scratches their arm from eczema or reaches for their asthma pump, it's them being called a nigger. And as we have never been, we are not niggers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up we have Christian Dennis. All right, good evening. Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Christian Dennis, 1623 Ball. Along with Commissioner Brandon Morrison referring to us as anti-business extremists, I don't understand how we got the title of being extremists. But she also peddles various propaganda regarding XAI, including the fact that it will be, that it will bring jobs. When, in reality, workers would only consist of few security system admins, hardware tech, and tech specialists, most of which being remote workers and workers he has flew in from California. So the, any idea of any of this money coming back to the community is propaganda. And even if it was to bring a certain amount of money to the community, is it worth our health? These turbines will emit an excess of nitrous oxides which can contribute to things like acid rain. And I, I would like to encourage you all to look within yourselves and please, please find some love, find some integrity. This is not worth whatever amount of money is going into any pockets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up we have Arianna Sulia.
Good evening. My name is Arianna Sulia, 7383 Memphis Arlington Road, 38135. I'm a college student at the U of M, and I'm an educator. And I'm here because I love this city and the people who breathe its air. The richest man in the world said he chose Memphis to build this supercomputer because he wanted to get it done quickly, as soon as possible. He boasted that he got it done in 122 days. This happened with no community involvement, and the process has been extremely lacking in transparency and regulation since the beginning. So I ask you, does it sound like the business practices of a man truly interested in securing a thriving future for those living in Memphis today? With only a rumored 15 onsite jobs available, onsite jobs available and a history of unreliability and unethical business practices from Elon Musk, I ask you, whose interests, whose interests are you truly committed in serving? Because we already know that Elon Musk is comfortable with allowing black and brown bodies to suffer in the name of profit based on the way his family made their money in apartheid-era South Africa. So when he comes into this city, into these neighborhoods that are still fighting to thrive because of a long and shameful history of injustice in the American South, when we see him come in quickly, polluting our neighborhoods, specifically at the moment with no regulation in the form of these 33 methane gas turbines, polluting southwest Memphis that have no permit and no plans of being shut down, when we see our representatives ignore our demands for a say, have no urgency, and make decisions for us that do not include us, we are left to conclude that no one is interested in standing up for those being affected today. Like Orion said earlier, Commissioner Morrison and many others have labeled us as radicals, extremists, anti-business, anti-progress, and anti-Memphis when in reality, all we are doing is turning to each other, to people power, in an attempt to disrupt the path of least resistance that careless billionaires like Elon Musk know Tennessee has been in the past. What we are is dedicated to showing him that he is wrong. Because there are people experiencing environmental racism today in the form of undeniable and unregulated pollution, which will only worsen. Their bodies are being sacrificed in the name of profit. Economic development that can only progress off the blackened lungs and dying bodies of black and brown people is a common thread in this country's history that we should be dedicated to disrupting and not perpetuating. I'm not asking anyone here to abandon the vision of a future where Memphis is thriving and successful. What I'm asking is for us to remember that history always repeats itself and complacency is not looked back on kindly. Ask yourself who in history shares your words when you belittle or ignore the voices of the suffering in the name of progress. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, Commissioner Thornton, I'm going to go to you.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank y'all, particularly to the high school student. You graduate Friday, you said? Nice. Just kudos to you in high school. I was not coming to county commission meetings. So it seems very responsible, and I just really, it touches my heart when I hear folks say that for the next 20 years, I'm choosing Memphis. Because at some point, when I moved back home at 24, you know, I was like, these things shouldn't take 20 years, but very much so, you could easily find yourself as a 40-year-old still having to fight for so many things, sort of just basic human necessities. And so I just hope that that is not your truth. You know, what, 10, 15, going on 15 years into my 20-year stint? And so it's just unfortunate to see the change really does take so long, though it doesn't have to. And so I'm hopeful that today this resolution will pass. I got in queue particularly because, for you guys to manage expectations. The language of the resolution is a request. And I've seen multiple times that we make requests of bodies, and they do nothing with it. So just to the sponsor, the lead sponsor here, have we reached out to TVA and MLGW, and are they aware of the resolution? And have they given any type of preliminary commitments to honor this request? Through the chair to the sponsor.
And I've shared the email that I sent out to McGowan with the commission, as well as to some of the individuals out there. And if you want me to include you on the emails, you know, make sure I receive your email address. So I can do that. And to your point, McGowan sent us an email Friday, but it wasn't sufficient. So I responded to that email. So, and again, I remember one of our colleagues had requested that certain individuals come forth through an email, and they never responded. So to your question, no.
And just, just pay attention to that part, you know, with MLGW, I know that they have public meetings. So it might be appropriate, hopefully, if this resolution passes, to follow up with an action at MLGW and to put pressure there. I mean, you really have to just be mindful when there's a request made. This could easily be a waste of your time tonight. And I saw the work on behalf of my colleague that you've done in preparation for your exams. I don't want it to be for naught. So there's a little bit more work to do to push the requests, resolutions through. But definitely want to encourage you guys to do all the steps to be able to have the teeth to this type of resolution. So thank you all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton.
Ms. Chairman, point of order.
Yeah, Commissioner Brooks.
We have a member of the public who has a question about the rule, the speaking, public speaking rule.
Yeah, Glenda Hicks.
Could we entertain a question?
Okay, yes. See, I think we, I was going to go to her next. So I don't know if you heard earlier, the rule around, yeah, so, so we waived it earlier. So you're welcome to have another two minutes if you like. We'll suspend the rule. Okay, we'll do that without objection. You'll have two minutes. Just state your name and address again.
Glenda Hicks, 608 Gillies, co-founder 21st Century Memphis Bust. And we are a grassroots organization focused on improvements with MLGW. I'm here in, of course, behalf of certainly not supporting XAI. Why? Because it is a serious power drain on the grid. We don't need the turbines without question. We know the impact that that will cause. But beyond that, when we look at our electrical grid, the drain that these data centers are causing across the country, it's not just locally. Do your research, commissioners. There is grave concern across the country regarding data centers. So we do not need to allow Memphis and Shelby County to be a dumping ground. Box Town has been dumped on for years. They have been disrespected for years, for decades. They were annexed in 1968, and it took them over a decade to get proper service. So that's taxation without representation. They have been mistreated for years. So they can talk all day about the minimal impact. They don't need any more impact. They need concerned representation to clean up all that has been done for years. So we need to put an halt without question, and then focus on how we can improve the damage, how we can dismiss the damage that has been done for years. Please have a heart and do the right thing.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go back. Commissioner Sugarman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And so, again, this is just the beginning. But I just want to bring the listening audience up to date because it seems like at every turn, you know, the XAI has, you know, put in things in place. For example, it's claiming, or they're claiming that these turbines are temporary. But one of the speakers stated, no, they're not temporary because you need all this power. And so the other question is, I've asked, when will MLGW and TVA allow XAI, you know, to come on board? And there's no timeframe. And then I talked to the attorneys today when I was asking about an injunction because they are operating without a permit. They said they could operate without a permit for up to a year. Then they could ask for an extension for another year. And it's like, you know, where does it end? And again, to my colleague's point, yes, this is a request because as a body, okay, we cannot require. We can only request. What we can do is write ordinances so that when these data centers come, there will be stopgates. Now, we've got to figure out what are the stopgates? How can we deal with XAI? And again, there has not been any studies as far as, it's really a right. And again, there has not been any studies as far as, it's really a race for them. It's a race about power. It's not about us, because to them, we're expendable. Where are they located? When the poorest communities in the country. They're here to exploit our resources. I understand that the Edge Board gave them parcels of land. Why? Why? They can afford to pay. So what are they giving back to the community? I haven't heard anything. And this is not about economics at all. And so I urge my colleagues not only to support this resolution, but we have to do more as a body. We have to join forces with the city council. We have to reach out to the health department. We have to create zoning ordinances. And somebody asked, can it be retroactive? And I don't know about that. I am not an attorney, and as you can see, our legal team has left us for the night. But retroactive? And so then it comes to play, ex post facto loss. I don't know about that, because there's been entity after entity who've come and ru- ruined our environment and left without any consequences. So when will that process end? You know, and you think about the physical devastation, you think about the mental devastation, you think about our kids, unborn kids, and I know one person said, I want to raise my family here, you know? And I think that's wonderful. And also, just real quickly, I have no seconds, I just want to thank these young people for coming out, continue to come out, and continue to fight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Bradford.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman, we did receive an email from Doug McGowan, and it looks like he sent it to 69 people on May 2nd that had some updates here. This resolution is requesting an update, or we were telling him what, telling them what forum we want that in, or is an email like this going to suffice? That was just my question on the item.
Okay. Chair? Okay. Thank you for that question, because I answered that. McGowan sent an email, and I responded to his email, and I sent it to everybody. And so there's specific questions, and I prefer it to be open as opposed to an email, because, again, I like to be transparent. And I, they're holding us accountable. And so to your point, yes, I responded to McGowan, and then, yes, I would like, not only McGowan, I want the chamber, I want city council, I want a health department, I want all of us to be in the room together. So we collectively can ask questions. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bradford, you're still at the floor.
I think for what the sponsor's trying to get out of this resolution, the people involved are going to send an email and say that that answers the request for a status update. And so my concern is just back to the sponsor, is that if we want this to be a public forum, this resolution probably needs to state something to the effect that this is a public forum, whether we're inviting them to another commission meeting to speak.
Is that an amendment?
I'm not going to make that amendment.
Okay, I'll make that amendment, then, that it needs to be a response to the public in a public forum. Thank you. I get a second? Uh, yes, yes.
All right. Commissioner Sugarman has amended it to request that the update be held in a public forum, seconded by Commissioner Ford. Can we do that without objection? All right. Hearing none, that amendment is adopted. All right. Commissioner Caswell.
Again, I want to just say to the public, again, we hear you, I hear you, and to the young folks, thank you for coming out. I told our young people today to watch. I don't know if they're still with us, but I'm glad that you all showing them what advocating can do by letting your voice be heard. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I think we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 40, as amended, and we can vote. Please catch your votes. Okay, I think we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Ford, Thornton, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Wright has voted no. Commissioners Mills and Bradford have abstained. Have eight ayes, one no, and two abstained.
Item 40 passes. All right. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Item 41.
Item 41 comes from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item 41 is a resolution approving expenditure of Shelby County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency general funds to purchase two outdoor warning sirens from Comserve Services LLC. This item requires expenditure of general funds in the amount not to exceed $76,828, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. Decided it was an add-on in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
Item 41 moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Sugarman, can we get a committee report?
It was favorable.
Okay. Thanks so much. I see no one on the screen. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 41. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. We have 10 eye votes.
Item 41 passes. Item 42.
Item 42 comes from the Law Enforcement Corrections and Courts Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as vice chair. Item 42 is a resolution approving a grant award from the U.S. Department of Transportation to the Shelby County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for the performance period of October 1, 2024 through August 31, 2025. This item requires the appropriation expenditure passed through funds from the state of Tennessee amending the FY 2025 grant operating budget in the amount of $30,080, and allows the Shelby County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency to accept a donation as the grant administrator on behalf of the Memphis Shelby County Local Emergency Planning Committee for hazardous materials training for $7,520. This item requires the approval to amend the FY 2025 grant operating budget for a total amount not to exceed $37,600, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. Decided it was an add-on in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
All right. Item 42 moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Sugarman, what do you say?
It was favorable.
Okay. Thanks so much. Seeing no one on the screen. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on item 42. We can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. We have 12 eye votes.
Item 42 passes. Item 43.
Item 43 comes from the Milton and Community Enhancement Grants Committee with Commissioner Sugarman as acting chair. Item 43 is a resolution warning county funds for the FY 2025 operating budget in the amount of $40,000 to School Seed Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of $40,000 from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. Decided it was an add-on in April 30th, 2025 committee meeting.
All right. Item 43 is moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Commissioner Sugarman, committee report?
Yes, it was favorable.
Okay. Thanks. You're, you're, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank Blount for, again, walking me through this process. And so I want to amend this item for $22,800 for the skateboard park. This is my CEP funds, the balance of my CEP funds, and this will exhaust all of them. And this will go to School Seed, to join the other funds that are there. And I just wanted the listening public to know that we are in the process of creating a skateboard park, and I'm so excited.
All right, Commissioner Sugarman, you're good? Okay. All right. And Madam Clerk, will you please prepare the screen to vote on item 43? Sorry, Commissioner Sugarman, there was, you had amendment?
What was?
Sorry, totally. I got Bradford second. I wasn't sure what he was seconding. Refresh us again, Commissioner Sugarman.
I would like to amend my, the balance of my CEP funds of $22,800 towards the skateboard park, and School Seed has the, the funds there, the rest of the funds.
All right. So in addition to what's in here now?
Exactly.
Okay, so the new amendment total will be $62,800.
Correct.
Okay. Seconded by Bradford, without objection. All right. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on 43, as amended. All right. I think we're all set. Close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, and Chairman Whaley. We have 10 eye votes.
Sorry.
Okay. That's okay. Correction. We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. We have 11 eye votes.
Okay. Item 43 passes. Commissioners, we have one add-on for consideration. You have, you should have this in front of you, item 43A. This is the ordinance fixing the tax rate. This is just to keep us on schedule. We won't fill in any of these blanks tonight, but we'll just keep it rolling into, into its next reading, where it can be amended at a future date. Can we do, can we add it on without objection? Okay. Hearing none, Madam Partner, please read the caption.
Item 43A is an add-on item. Item 43A is an ordinance fixing the tax rate for Shelby County, Tennessee, at blank dollars for tax year 2025, fiscal year 2026, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bivs and Chairman Michael Whaley.
All right. The add-ons moved by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Ford, you have the floor.
So this would satisfy first reading, this vote?
That's correct.
So what would the, what are the tentative dates for the second and third reading for the purposes of just knowing?
I think it was laid out in the budget calendar. I don't know, Budget Chair Clay Bivs, you want to just clarify what those dates were?
It is in the budget calendar. Unfortunately, I don't have it right in front of me. Ms. Thomas, do you have a copy of the budget calendar on you?
If it's the same one, don't worry about it.
Okay, it's the exact same one.
So even though we didn't get the presentation, that doesn't change your schedule on the, on what you gave us a long time ago? Is, is, is it the same dates, even though we didn't get our budget presentation? We don't have to move any dates.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the, the reality is that it's, it's highly likely that this will get deferred at least one meeting, because we're behind on the receiving of the budget. But at least this way, there's no way, if miracles happen, there's no way that we're, we allow this to kind of hold us back. There's nothing that says we can't defer to another reading if we need to, but at least we get one reading on the tax ordinance.
Okay. All right.
All right. All right. Thanks, Commissioner Ford. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote on 43A. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Clay Bivs, Caswell, Sugarman, Ford, Wright, Bradford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, Avent, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Mills has abstained. We have 11 ayes and one abstained.
All right. 43A goes to a second reading. All right, Commissioners, if you have any announcements or statements, you can jump in the queue. Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you so much. We have a meeting, a District 12 meeting on May 10th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., enhancing business ownership program, and it's going to be held at New Direction. So please, all you young entrepreneurs, join us on May 10th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, while we're on budget, are, is, was, is this week's budget committee meeting canceled? Did I see that?
You want to?
Commissioner Wright, yes, the subcommittee meeting was canceled, because we have seen everyone who signed up, as far as elected, in departments. So now we will get back onto subcommittee schedule after we hear the mayor's budget on the 14th. We'll propose a budget, correct? And you should have received an email. If not, I'll make sure that there's something that goes out regarding it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Caswell?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Just reminder to all, to everyone that this week is Children's Mental Health Week all week, and this is Mental Health Month. And tomorrow, we're going to have as our guest speaker with the Samaritan, Samaritan Group, Ms. Javina, I'm sorry about your last name, Thomas, Ms. Javina Thomas, at the Dwelling Place, 3034 O Austin P Highway, at 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock. It's going to be a lunch and learn. We're all in this together, coping with collective trauma. And so if you can come out tomorrow to be with us, we appreciate that. And remember, to our district, those we are activating, our churches and community organizations that have summer school camps, basketball leagues, and so if you want to sign up, go to wraparoundfrazier, I'm sorry, wraparounddistrict6@gmail.com if you want to sign your church up to be a part of that. Friday night, we're going to have Friday night, light at night, 8 o'clock to midnight, 3034 O Austin P Highway. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Avent?
Thank you, Chair. Again, happy birthday, belated birthday, again, to Commissioner Bradford. And I'd like to also share that we're having, so glad to be able to be back out and about with my district. We're having our community conversation tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:30 at Ferguson Community Center, and want to invite all the residents of District 5 to come out.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give a shout out to Commissioner Bradford. He coordinated a tour of Coryville for neighborhood schools within my district, and so we're just excited to be able to have this exposure trip. And thank you for coordinating that and getting that all set up. And shout out to Coryville. District 10 is coming to Coryville soon, next week, actually.
Very good. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, everyone. With that, we adjourn to Monday, May 19, 2025, at 3:00 p.m.